March 22nd. First, some announcements. On April 3rd, at the Brookline Teen Center is a celebration of the lifetime achievements and contributions to the town of Dr. Bob Spurber, who was our superintendent of schools for many years, ending in the 80s. And then he went on to do some very distinguished things, including founding a leadership institute at BU and assisting with the BU's takeover of the Chelsea Schools. And he's been a valued member of the Brookline community, a longtime town meeting member. And I've gotten to know him in recent years, and just, he's a real treasure for the town. So it's on Sunday, April 3rd, at the Brookline Teen Center, starting at 4:30. So anyone wishing to -- more information can get it. Get the information at the BrooklineTeenCenter.org/Bob-Spurber. Worthwhile event.
I have three announcements, and I'm going to go in no particular order here. I wanted to remind my colleagues on the board and members of the public that the first Housing Production Plan Meeting is a week from, or just under a week, the 28th of March, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Pure School Cafeteria. This is in connection with the Housing Production Plan. It's sort of a community forum, community feedback opportunity, and I think it's important to participate. And again, I thank Selectman Heller for bringing this sort of issue to our attention at the last time meeting. Second announcement, I was asked to remind people about the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event, which is going to be on April 3rd.
(Laughter).
At the --
Public comment.
The Public Health Building, the Brookline Garden of Remembrance. This is an event that brings attention, or seeks to bring attention, to domestic violence, both in our community and across the country. There's a website where people can get more information, InHerShoesBrookline weebly.com. That's W-E-E-B-L-Y dot com. Second annual event, I believe it starts at 1:00 and lasts until 3:00 o'clock. And then, my self-appointed duty to remind people of the Leaf Blower Bylaw. It is now the spring, and I want to take the opportunity to remind landscapers and residents of the town's noise control bylaw regarding leaf blowers, which is Article 8.13 of the town's bylaws. Starting last week, actually, March 15th through May 15th, leaf blowers are allowed with a couple of regulations and restrictions. Leaf blowers must be 67 decibels or less. Leaf blowers cannot be operated before 8:00 a.m. or after 8:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday. And no leaf blower shall be operated before 9:00 a.m. or after 8:00 p.m. on weekends or holidays. Leaf blowers have to be operated in compliance with the manufacturer recommendations. And in the event that people are not abiding by those restrictions, those regulations, they run the risk of being fined by the police department. In order to sort of find out if your leaf blower is compliant, if it does meet the 67 decibel restriction, the Department of Public Works is offering testing opportunities on Tuesday evenings between 5:00 and 7:00 at the highway lot at 870 Hammond Street. So people can use leaf blowers from now until May 15th with the restrictions I laid out. And of course, more information is available, both in the Article 8.13 of the bylaws, but it's also prominently featured on the front of the town's webpage, in case anybody wants more information.
Right. Thank you, Selectman Franco. Anyone else? Before we get started, I'll announce that Selectman Daly is with us on the telephone and will be participating remotely pursuant to this board's authority under 940 CMR 29.10 Perrin 8. Selectman Daly will be participating remotely via telephone due to illness. There is a quorum physically present, and all votes taken will be taken by recorded roll call, but we always do that anyway. And Selectman Daly will be allowed to vote and participate in the proceedings in any way she wishes to participate. So Selectman Daly, can you hear us?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Hopefully, we can hear you. And there is a checklist, which I've reviewed, and we meet the requirements. So with that said, let's start with public comment. We have two folks signed up, and I'll -- I see Mr. Vitolo on his way to the mic, so I'll call on him first.
Is that the two folks?
He's looking for the sympathy factor here.
Mr. Vitolo.
And friend.
And friend.
This is a bit of a challenge, but here we go. Let's try this. My name is Tommy Vitolo. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 6. This is my daughter Angelina. To the extent that she says anything, it will be her first public comment, so pay very close attention. A little bit frazzled here. Here we go. Okay, I want to hold up and introduce you to my friend, Dr. Bonbright. Dr. Bonbright wrote "The Principles of Public Utility Rates" in 1961. And this book, my friends, is the most important book that commissioners, regulators, and indeed boards of selectmen rely on when setting rates for public utilities. I know this because this is something I do as part of my job. In fact, I'm in the process of writing testimony, both regarding a natural grid case in Massachusetts and a South Carolina electric and gas case in South Carolina, on ratemaking. And I want to introduce you to the five key principles of ratemaking, and then I'll tell you why. The five principles are effectiveness, allowing the utility to recover its capital and operating costs; fairness, fairly apportioning the cost of service among different customers while avoiding undue discrimination; efficiency, to promote the efficient use of the commodity or the resource; stability, to ensure that the revenues are stable from year to year and to minimize unexpected rate changes; and simplicity, to allow the public to understand and use the rates in a reasonable way. And I want to talk specifically tonight about fairness and efficiency as they relate to our water bill. Our water bill includes a fire service charge. It's between $500 and $500 per quarter, and it is assessed to customers with fire sprinklers in their buildings. So let's consider two buildings equal in size, building material, number of apartments or condominiums, size of commercial space, identical in all ways, except that Building A has fire sprinklers and Building B does not. Which building has higher public health and safety for the occupants? Those who live there, who work there, who shop there? Clearly, Building A. Which building, if on fire, is safer for firefighters? Those who run in when everyone else is running out? The one with the sprinkler or the one that doesn't have the sprinkler? Clearly, Building A, the one with the sprinkler. Which building would you rather your building be located next to, were it on fire? Which building reduces the chance of a fire spreading from one building to the next? Building A with the sprinkler or Building B, the one without? Clearly, Building A. And yet, which building do we charge more money on their water and sewer bill? The one which is more dangerous to the occupants, our fire department and the neighboring buildings? No. The building that is safer. And I contend that this is unfair. It benefits public safety to have a sprinkler system. Having a sprinkler system doesn't impose any ongoing cost to the water department. And we don't charge homeowners, house owners, if there's a fire hydrant in front of their house, the functional equivalent to a sprinkler. I also contend that it doesn't promote efficiency. After all, a building owner is not going to change the decision as to whether or not to install or maintain a sprinkler because of these water rates. And a building owner is not going to change his likelihood of having a fire because of these water rates. So this particular column in the water rate, this particular column, between $500 and $500 per quarter, assessed to buildings that have a sprinkler system installed, whether or not it's ever used, is unfair and it is inefficient. So what does this have to do with you, the board that sets the rates for our water department? Well, you own this. You set the rates, and you can change the rates. And so my suggestion to you is this, I don't want you to decide to do anything yet. What I would like you to do is to let the water department know that when they bring to you draft, proposed, possible rates in about a month, that they bring you two sets of rates, identical in all columns, except that one of them doesn't have this $500 to $500 charge per quarter for fire service. Now, to compare apples to apples, you need to make sure total revenue is the same, which means they will have to increase something else on that bill. The water per 100 cubic feet, another fixed charge, whatever they think promotes fairness and equity. But I ask that you ask them to present you two sets of bills that generate equal revenue, one with the fire, one without, so that you can decide if the tiny additional cost to those other bills, which by the way, results in the same total amount paid, is a good idea with respect to fairness or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitolo. Mr. Lescoye. And what I didn't say.
Mr. Youschel.
Five minutes, please.
I'm coming in for Tommy.
Yeah.
It's David Lescoye, town meeting member, Precinct 11. I'm also here to speak about our water and sewer. These days, with all the -- what we're hearing in the news about Flint, Michigan, and Newark, New Jersey, and other places, we are indeed fortunate in Brookline that we have ample supply of pure water, well-maintained sewers and drains. However, we do have a problem, and Tommy's just touched on one aspect of it, and I think an important one, and one that I would agree would be a reasonable place to start our effort, which has to do with the fire sprinkler. But there's a broader issue. We have had a problem with our pricing, and actually, today in the New York Times, there's an article about water pricing. And it's a problem beyond Brookline, but it's a problem in the whole country. So in anticipation of that maybe, we viewed warrant Article 9, which was passed unanimously at the fall town meeting, as a way to begin to democratically address the search for a solution to balance all of the ups and downs and backs and forth of the difficult business of setting a price for water. It's -- and actually, in that article in the New York Times, they compared the methods used in electricity setting. They used that as a model, and saying that some of the principles in setting rates for electricity would be relevant to waters. And that's what Tommy really does. He's in electricity, and so I think it can help us a lot in using. Now, as part of the effort to -- that went into the warrant Article 9, I constructed a model to find out, because there'd been a lot of discussion about whether, what the impact of the rates that we have, we had, starting in 2012, whether they were fair or not. And so I created a model to look at it, and looked at it from single-family houses to large buildings, from people that use almost no water to people that must be keeping the flossits on all day. And I found that it was quite uniform. The price was quite uniform in 2012, when the new rates came into effect. And I also found that each year, and each year, it became a little bit less uniform, and the change had to do with the increase in the rates, and the impact was quite random. So I'm really glad to know that this year, the board has entered into a contract with a consultant to work with the Water and Sewer Division to take another look, because the plan that was put in place years ago actually had an expiration date, so it's appropriate at this point to come back and take another look. So the Water and Sewer Division is currently in the process of taking a step back and looking at the whole picture. And actually, Fred Russell, the director of the department, called me today, because we had discussed this in January. Now I'm back from our travels, and he said that he'd like to get together, and he's got now a lot of the information that he needs to have a meaningful discussion. He has the preliminary estimates from the MWRA, he has the budget that has been through advisory committee process. So I'm hoping that Fred and the department will appoint a staff committee, and we can begin to work on some of the kinds of things that Tommy's working on and others, having to do with what is a fair and efficient and equitable way to set the rates, which is fully within the authority of the board. You have great discretion in doing that, and I think that we can work together to come up with a innovative and fair set of rates for the coming year. Or maybe it'll take several years to phase it over, but that's --
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lescoye. Ms. Fraley, would you like to speak?
I would, sir. Regina Fraley, town meeting member from Precinct 16. I was originally going to speak to one topic, but I cannot avoid also mentioning my predecessor's reference. I think if you hire a consultant to just do the numbers crunching, that's all they're going to do. This is also about policy, and that book that Tommy referenced, I'm sure goes to the equity factor politically. I would go the next step. I think the selectmen ought to establish a citizens committee, a selectmen citizens committee, to sit and discuss all the variables that go into a vital resource without which nobody can live, which in the history, and I took this course at Harvard many decades ago, it's historical, so it hasn't changed, in the history of property taxes, that water and sewage removal of some kind is the history of how cities began to do property taxes. We're now not getting any of these things out of our property taxes, we're now getting feed. And the water meter fee, for example, is, in this community, mandatory and a cash cow, because we cannot live without water. So as a result, if I have an $8 fee, I'm paying $90 every quarter to you guys, even though I use only $8 worth of water. There's something so inherently and obviously unfair about that, that it requires really doing your job and really sitting down with people who can give you the impact on them and coming up with policies that are more equitable to more of the citizens of Brookline, particularly people on fixed incomes, or even somebody who might have lost their job should be factored in, in case they're hitting hard times. Water should never be a cash cow, and that's exactly what it is right now. All right, having said that, and maybe in the fall, there'd be a warrant article requiring it, and you can go ahead and establish this committee on your own proactively. Having said that, I now want to remind people that the South Brookline Senior Socia's begin this week with a cookout provided by the Recreation Department. It's this Friday at 10:30, coffee and pastries, and then lunch around noon, cooked by the very staff of the Recreation Department. And it's open, just give me a call at 469-0052, area code 617, and I'll make sure that there's an extra burger or two for each person who lets me know. There's no cost associated with any of our socia's. Many of the department heads have been incredibly supportive, because they do get it. They get that seniors are on fixed incomes. So we are now, thanks also subsequent to that, starting the following week, thanks to Alan Balsam, we are now going to get eight weeks of yoga, paid for and provided by the Health Department. That's how much he believes in this and how thrilled he is that we're doing it. So we have other programs, the police are going to come and talk about crime and elders and a whole bunch of things, but let's get started for next Friday with the cookout. And I'm at 617-469-0052. Leave a message. All I need to know is you're coming, and you need to keep -- don't do it arbitrarily. If you're going to come and call me, please come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fraley. Okay, let's delve into our calendar. First is the minutes for the March 15th meeting. Anyone have any changes?
Yes, I've given my suggestions to Kate.
I also gave mine.
Okay, and I didn't have any. I will move that we adopt the minutes as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Daly. Oh, you weren't -- yeah, you weren't here. Okay. And the chair votes aye. So that passes.
Did you miss licenses, vouchers, and contracts?
Uh...
No. Old agenda.
Next item, Mr. Wigley. Question of approving the following contract amendments with HMFH Architects in connection with the Edward Devotion School Project, $53,925 early bid packages, and $69,550 for hazardous materials abatement reporting. Mr. Wigley.
Good evening. Tony Wigley with the Building Department. Last time I was here, I sort of suggested that we were essentially almost in construction, and these were in construction, and these two contract amendments reflect that. The first is for early bid packages in the amount of $53,925. That's to issue an early bid package for demolition, hazardous materials abatement, concrete, structural steel, and earthwork, to get a jump on construction. And the second is for hazardous materials abatement and reporting, which is one of the first things we'll be doing when we're in construction.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that the early bid package, you are going to work with our construction manager at risk, and the idea is to streamline the whole process, and so that's not going to help in the long run.
Okay, I hope it does just that. Spend a little money to save more. Okay, I will therefore move that we approve the following contract amendments with HMFH Architects in connection with the Edward Devotion School Project, $53,925 for early bid packages, and $69,550 for hazardous materials abatement reporting. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Wigley.
Thank you very much.
We have two temporary wine and malt beverage licenses. I'll take them, I will move them in omnibus fashion. The Police Department has reviewed the applications and recommends approval. Everything seems to be in order. So I will move that we grant temporary wine and malt beverage license to Fine Rice Grill. Lisa Weisel, manager, in connection with a 70th birthday party to be held on March 26th from 7:00 to 11:00 at 1281 West Roxbury Parkway. Oh, subject to police, okay, department approval. I thought I saw it in here. Okay. Okay. And I'll also move that we grant temporary wine and malt beverage license non-sales to Lars Anderson Auto Museum in connection with a corporate launch to be held on March 29th from 6:30 to 10:30 at 15 Newton Street, again, subject to Police Department approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Moving on to our calendar, and we're running a little behind. So the first item is the question of approving, authorizing the sale of $24 million, $720,000, $24 million, $720,000 for new and refinanced issues of general obligations bond to Raymond James and Associates, and approving the sale of $500,000 in ban funding. Mr. Cirillo.
Good evening. Yes, this was a particularly complicated borrowing this year. We have general obligation bonds, we have a debt exclusion, we have refinancing, and we have a one-year ban on a project foreign enterprise fund. So it did get complicated. In addition to that, I wasn't particularly pleased at the process. I think there's been general discussion amongst the board members and myself about that issue, particularly that of some of the accuracy of the documents, and we are taking steps to address that as well. That being said, the auction itself and the results of the borrowing were wonderful. A rate of 2.357% for the long-term bond and a rate of 0.65% for the ban. Those are remarkable bids that continues to reflect the fact that the Fed is holding out rates, although they're starting to tick up. We know that they're going to be ticking up, we've been knowing that for a while, but still, they are low. And so I think that we, I recommend, of course, that we accept this sale. There's another complicating factor to this, which is, first time it's happened in my tenure here, and that is that the piece of the long-range, the general obligation bond associated with the devotion school, when the debt exclusion was authorized for ballot and was passed, it had no dollar amount on it. And therefore, the entire authorization is considered a debt exclusion, even though we're not excluding the entire project, we're only excluding about half of the project.
Right.
And that half was going to begin next year. Nevertheless, the state regulations require that any premium associated with the devotion school be set aside to offset the tax rate because of the debt exclusion. So we have to hold on to approximately $461,000 of that premium to appropriate, and in future years, to offset the tax rate at the time that we use the exclusion. Things like this were, kept this borrowing quite an active borrowing and quite an interesting, if not a worrisome borrowing. That being said, there were a significant amount of bidders, I think there were nine bidders for the general obligation bond, the lowest bond, excuse me, the lowest offering was Raymond James. Again, they came in at 2.357, but the nine bidders were very tightly packed, and again, the net coupon after premium ended up being 3.425. So with that, I recommend two things. First of all, I recommend that you accept the borrowing and accept the ban, and I also recommend that in future borrowings, that we may consider conversations with our bond counsel, requiring timeliness and delivery of documents and general accuracy of the documents. I wasn't particularly pleased with our bond counsel this year. That being said, I recommend this sale.
Yeah, I'd like to expand on some of what Treasurer Cirillo had said. In my other job, I actually represent an agency that issues hundreds of millions of dollars of tax-exempt and sometimes taxable bonds every year. So when I saw in my packet that we were going to approve the issuance of bonds, my antenna sort of got into motion. And I wondered about some of the disclosure documents that we are going to be signing and representing to the investing public that are accurate. And I noticed that the bonds were sold on the 15th of March, and therefore, a preliminary official statement, as it's called, was available, but we didn't receive it. I knew to go onto the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board website and get a copy and review it. I don't think any other board members did.
I can assure you- I can assure you, I did not.
Okay, and if you, and if they did, I'm not sure that they would, within a short period of time, know what to look for in that, I did talk to bond counsel about that and some other things, and, you know, the response was not satisfactory to me, the other thing is, there's another document that we are signing as members of the Board called a tax certificate, tax certificates are very, very serious documents, where we're representing a number of things with respect to what's going to happen to the proceeds of the bonds, we potentially have great liability personally, as well as the potential that our bonds could become taxable, which would be a big problem, now, I don't expect that to be an issue here, I'm more concerned with the process, no one, except me, probably even knew that such a document existed, and I knew to ask for it, and right on the front page, there's a huge mistake, in terms of who was buying the bonds, now, that's not a big deal, but it does reflect maybe some sloppiness that in other areas could be significant. Yeah, I think what we need to do, I mean, I'm not going to go back and relitigate, you know, this bond deal, but going forward, we need a better process that requires bond counsel to provide to us documents in enough time so that we can read them, figure out what's confusing to us in them, and ask questions, so that when we sign the documents, we're signing knowingly, we're signing, you know, not just, you know, rubber stamping something that could get us into a lot of trouble, now, I don't really have too much fear of that here in Brookline, but you can read the papers and see where, there are many issuers across this country that have gotten into big, big trouble because of relatively minor things, and, you know, I know, because, you know, this is my job, that both the SEC as well as the IRS is looking for this type of problems in bond deals, and I happen to know people who got caught up in those things, so my concern is that, you know, we need a better process next time a bond issue comes to the Board, and I'm going to work with, you know, staff to do that, because, you know, I've done this in my job, and there's just some simple things that we need to do to ensure that before the Board puts their signature to any document, there's at least some minimal review and understanding by the Board of what they're signing to, so going forward, we need to do that, and I'll work with you or with staff to make sure that's done.
And just a comment, and I wholeheartedly agree, just for the purposes of the Board of Selectmen and the general public, the documents arrived mid-morning today, for a vote this evening, and signatures this evening, the offering, the final offering statement was issued approximately noon today, yes, I could have gone online, but I like to get it hard copy, and I did receive it at noon today, and that certainly is not satisfactory, it just does not allow for a timely review of the docs, and Selectman Green actually found an error that I had missed in the review of it, because I was so rushed to get it, all the docs up here and circulated properly, so anyway, I wanted to thank you for that, Selectman Green, and again, I don't know who, you know, whenever you select a finance director, I think one of the things that they should be doing is reflecting on, possibly going up to bid the bond counsel position, or at least renegotiate it, because we could, as Selectman Green had suggested to me in a private conversation today, we could require a schedule of when the documents arrive, and I thought that was a sensational idea, and again, unfortunately, I won't be here to have that conversation with the bond counsel or the new bond counsel, but I think it's worthwhile pursuing.
Okay.
Do we need some process by which a new bond coun, or we review the performance of the current bond counsel, and whether we are going to look at retaining...
No, you have a year to do this now, you borrow once a year.
Well, I can assure the Board that I'm very aware of the issues, and I will be putting together a process to evaluate the bond counsel, I'll be speaking with our financial advisor about that as well.
Right, and just to assure the public that this is a good bond sale.
Oh, yeah.
It's, we're talking technicalities, we're fixing it, and the documents, when they get signed, will be correct, and there won't be any danger of defaults, or these becoming not taxable, or...
No, I agree with Selectman Green that there is no real possibility of that occurring, it's a good bond sale, but there was sloppiness in the paperwork, that's the only way I could describe it, sloppiness, so.
And let me just make clear, I don't think that there is any problem, you know, with this bond issue, I mean, I did review these documents, and for that, for whatever that's worth, you know, everything seems in order, but my concern is process, you make sure we have in place a process that is competent, that can catch a problem if there are, if a problem were to arise in a later bond deal, that is significant, and that, you know, that's something that is generally an issue that we should be thinking of in terms of, you know, how we handle a number of other matters here in town.
I, for one, thank you for being so diligent about this, because even though it's very, very minor, you know, you never know when something major could happen, and it's really important that we have processes that prevent these minor things, as well as any potential things in the future, so, I thank you.
Okay, are we ready for a vote, Mr. Cirillo, the vote that I need to, that we need...
It was attached in your package, I believe.
This big?
Yes, you probably don't have to read it into the record, but it's, Kate has had it, and it's the same...
Okay, so what I'd like to, I'll move that we authorize the sale of $24 million, $720,000 for new and refinanced issues of general obligations bonds to Raymond James and Associates, and approving the sale of $500,000 in ban funding, with the votes referenced in our package on pages five, three through five, five. Is that sufficient, Mrs. Cirillo?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye, Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
And as my last parting gift to you, I, as I've warned in the last couple of years, this is a long night of signing your name, I went through that package, and I think it took me about an hour, and I had to soak my hand at the end of it, so I'll collect the documents tomorrow, and we'll carry them back out to the financial advisor, and on to the bond counsel, the money will be wired to the town next Tuesday, we also have a minimum interest payment on one of the, the small piece of what was being refinanced, that is occurring next Thursday, Thursday, the 31st, so there's a lot of little pieces that are floating around, as I said, this was a complicated one, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Next item is affordable housing restriction for 1371 Beacon Street. Ms. Bullock.
Hello, I'm Virginia Bullock, I'm a housing planner for the town, and I am here to ask you to authorize the town administrator to execute a consent and subordination of the town's affordable housing restriction for the Beacon Park project located at 1371. Very simply, and Patrick Dober, the Executive Director of the Brookline Housing Authority, is here to get into just a tad more detail, the Beacon Park project is, many of you are probably familiar with it, it's a very tall building right beside the hotel on Webster Street, it's right on Beacon Park, it's sort of a whitish building, it's 80 units, there's several commercial floors, and there's 30 affordable units in the property, it was one of our expiring use projects, that's actually coming to the end of its expiration, the owner is taking advantage of a very important program, the RAD program, which Patrick's going to talk about for a second, and the town was able to insert itself in exchange for some tax relief in the early 2000s, to add an additional use restriction on the property that would have maintained affordability for another 10 or so years from now, 10 or 12 years from now, but we need to resubordinate our restriction to, it's very technical, and I didn't want to get into a lot of detail, Patrick, we'll talk a little bit more specifically about that deal, but I just wanted to also quickly use the opportunity to set the context, just so that folks understand, Brookline has historically had six expiring use projects, we had three property, and a total of 935 units, which is over 40% of Brookline's affordable housing stock, and over the years, since the early 2000s, we've been able to renegotiate each of these to extend affordability on these projects, these are properties that were built under HUD products in the 70s with very, with limited use restrictions, as you all know, now, we require permanent affordability on all of our projects, but that wasn't always the case, so the properties that we've been able to sort of work with, or the properties that are currently owned by Hebrew Senior Life at 100 Center, 112, and 1550 Beacon, that's over 500 units of mixed income senior housing now, similarly, we negotiated with the Juniper Street Co-op, which was originally an expiring use property, that's now 116-unit mixed-use condominium with 32 affordable units, permanently affordable, and then more recently, and Patrick will touch on this, with the Village at Brookline, the town, the town administrator, the housing division, the planning department, and the BHA, all negotiate, and the Housing Advisory Board, all negotiated with Wynn Property to extend affordability, so, we're proud of our work in preserving these units, and also making sure that they remain on the subsidized housing inventory, and I wanted Patrick to just take the opportunity, because they've really taken the lead on this, and are actively, I know the staff is very active in working with all the existing tenants in those property, in both of these more recent properties, so.
Mr. Dober.
So just a little bit of background and context on the current Beacon Park transaction, and the other transaction that Virginia mentioned, the Village at Brookline, whose financing closed last year, as a matter of policy, the town desires to increase the amount of affordable rental housing in Brookline for two reasons, first, in general, to provide greatly needed housing to low and moderate income people, and then specifically to work toward achieving the 10% overall affordable housing goal, in which case, the town would no longer be forced to accept so-called 40B developments, and achieving these goals, particularly that 10% mark, requires both creating new affordable housing apartments, and Selectman Franco mentioned the housing production plan currently underway, which works toward that goal, and preserving existing affordable housing, as Virginia mentioned, there are several privately-owned subsidized affordable housing developments in town that are key components of the affordable inventory, Beacon Park, the subject of your vote tonight, and the Village at Brookline, both of these properties were built in the late 1970s under HUD subsidy programs, with 40-year financing terms and 40 years of affordability restrictions, at properties like these around the country in strong rental markets like Brookline, owners have very powerful incentive to convert the properties to market-rate housing and significantly raise rents at the end of those original 40-year terms, fortunately, there is a federal Department of Housing and Urban Development program, a HUD program, called RAD, or the Rental Assistance Demonstration, and it provides owners of properties like this with new long-term subsidy and incentives in return for continued long-term affordability. The owner of Beacon Park, the Drucker Company, and then the owner of the Village, Wynn Properties, both have signed on to participate in this RAD program, the Housing Authority's role will be as administrator of new Section 8 subsidy at these properties that take the place of the previous generation of subsidies, and in this role, the Housing Authority will have quite a few responsibilities for certifying resident incomes, filling vacant apartments, inspecting the properties annually, and by the way, both the properties we're talking about are great assets for the town, they're well-managed and well-maintained, and then making the subsidy payments that come from HUD to the owners, so in effect, we're HUD's agent locally for the subsidies, as Virginia mentioned, at Beacon Park, the subject transaction tonight, 30 out of the 80 apartments under the original terms were subsidized for 40 years, now coming to its end, and under the RAD program, those 30 apartments will continue as affordable housing for another 20 years, and that transaction is set to be completed next month, the Village at Brookline, just briefly, since it's complete, but it's a similar transaction under the same HUD program, under the terms of the RAD program, without getting into all the details, a minimum of 77 apartments would have had to have been preserved as long-term affordable housing, however, the owner agreed as a concession to the town, and as a result of careful negotiation with the town, to increase the 77 apartments to 100 units, in the transaction that closed last year, so just to conclude and summarize what's going on with these two transactions, several benefits to the town, the town preserves as many of the units as possible under law as affordable for the long term, secondly, no current resident at either property will face any significant rent increases or displacement as a result, one of the best ones is, there's no cost to the town, the town isn't required to put in any of its own subsidy to accomplish these outcomes, all the new subsidies come from HUD via the Housing Authority, and as Virginia mentioned, and worth reinforcing, all of the apartments at both properties, affordable or not, will continue to be counted in the town's so-called subsidized housing inventory, the SHI, for purposes of working toward the state's 40B 10% test, and finally, from my perspective, the town manager, Mel, and the planning department staff, the Housing Advisory Board, and the Housing Authority have had a nice partnership here, collaborating effectively, and negotiating with the owners to achieve these positive outcomes, so there's some complexity to it, but I think that's the basic story, and welcome any questions.
So the bottom line with respect to 1371, we're preserving the units that were affordable for at least another 20 years.
Yep, right.
How many, Virginia, you mentioned that there are approximately 900 some odd expiring use...
Units, yeah.
At some point, we've preserved here, and then we've preserved at the Village at Brookline, you know, how much is at risk in the coming years?
So, right now, all the ones that were preserved at, that Hebrew Senior Life purchased, were put under a 40-year agreement, and that, and we assume that they'll reposition and maintain affordability, because they're a mission-driven organization, but their current restrictions run until 2044, and then Juniper Street, they're permanently restricted, the affordable units there, and then these two projects will be for 30 and minimally 20 more years, so into the 20s, 20, late 20, 36.
So between, between those four projects, that's all the expiring use?
It is, it's 935 units, the, again, Hebrew, the ones I'm speaking about, the Hebrew Senior Life, are three very large buildings, so, but, so the earliest is, I think, we're talking about 2036 for this, although, we're looking more closely, there may be some requirement for their, them to extend the affordability of a bit longer, we're not 100% sure about that, so...
I don't think any of us will be on the Board by then. I don't think any of us will be on the board by then.
No.
Speak for yourself.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So, sometimes we're able to, through the Zoning Board of Appeals, through conditions, to make 40B units, for instance, exist in perpetuity. And I'm wondering about these units. You mentioned that Juniper Street has now affordable in perpetuity. Hebrew Senior Life is probably going to be affordable forever if it still is under the control of an organization whose mission it is to provide that. But I'm wondering about these units, is there anything that can be done to place them into a perpetuity category, if you will?
I'm going to let Patrick answer that, because he's a lot more familiar with the financing, but unfortunately, I don't think so.
Yeah, you know, the short answer is, is no. In terms of the couple properties that I just mentioned, the subject property tonight, the Village at Brookline, they're owned by for-profit entities. And as a rule, the deal is, as long as you have government-subsidized financing, you agree to provide affordable units. Unfortunately, that financing is for a fairly long term, 20, 30, 40 years. Often, when that financing is due to be refinanced, the owners will agree to some continued affordability, as has been the case here, although they're for-profit motivated owners, they're in the business of affordable housing, which gets you partway there in terms of aligning objectives. And as the generations go along, frequently, there are programs and revisions of programs that create incentives and methods to continue, create incentives for owners to continue affordability. It's hard to predict 20, 30 years from now where we'll be with these properties. We've achieved the best we could under current law, and it does remain to be seen, but there's no absolute guarantee. There's no way to lock in, in perpetuity, affordability. You know, in contrast, the Brookline Housing Authority, as a government entity and purely mission-driven, all of our property is restricted in perpetuity, affordable, but the different ownership structure here, I don't think there's a way to ensure that for certain.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Selectman Daley.
I think this is a great outcome, and I'd like to compliment him to Mr. Dober and to the board for their hard work and everyone else who worked on this.
And I, I agree. Selectman Franco.
I agree as well. I want to compliment both you, Mr. Dober, you, Ms. Bullock, and you, Mr. Kluckner, on this collaboration, this triangle of collaboration. I do have one quick clarifying question. I know the Housing Authority administers at least two different types of Section 8 vouchers. There are these project-based vouchers, and then there are so-called mobile vouchers.
Right.
I assume, because we're saying that this is, these units are going to be restricted at least for the next few decades, these are project-based vouchers.
That's exactly right. These are incentives that are tied to the building, i.e. project-based vouchers, so households can come and go, can move, can pass away, and the units themselves will be affordable regardless of residents coming and going in the units.
I just want to make one last comment about Nancy's question. Unfortunately, in many of these, except for Juniper Street, we, the town did not have leverage, believe me. We looked for every single point of leverage to maintain affordability as long as possible. At Juniper Street, they needed the permission of the Board of Selectmen to make the transfer from rental to ownership, and we used that as an opportunity to get what we got. So, we just don't have that in these other cases, unfortunately, so.
Keep up the good work.
Selectman Green.
Yeah, I want to congratulate you on this great work, too. It's a great outcome, and I want to just raise an issue that people should be aware of. Another reason why this can't be in perpetuity, we're subordinating it to a private lender, and if it goes into foreclosure, that lender's not going to be subject to any restrictions in perpetuity or next year. So, I mean, I don't think that that makes this deal any, you know, lesser, but we just should be aware that, you know, that's what the subordination piece of this is all about.
Okay, I will move that we authorize the town administrator to execute a consent and subordination of affordable housing restriction for the project located at 1371 Beacon Street. Well, those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. We're now, we're running about 35 minutes late, and for that, I apologize, but sometimes life happens, I guess. We're now going to have a public hearing on the petition of N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy for permission to construct and a location for such line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under the following public way. Short Street conduit running southerly from manhole 15960 approximately, well, I'll read, it's on Short Street. Summit Avenue and Short Street.
Correct.
Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. This is a request from EverSource to upgrade the service to number 10 Short Street. It's a, the seven-day obligated notice to the abutters was sent out, and if you look at your third page, I believe, in your packet, the project information sheet, you'll see this is a pretty benign request in that the work will take place during the day, Monday through Friday. There'll be no need for taking parking spaces except where we're within the construction zone, and I recommend approval.
I have a question.
Go for it.
So, Mr. Ditto, do you, are, you're digging, there's some digging in the street here that N-Star is going to do, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I'm wondering about gas leaks, my favorite question.
Yep. We will apprise EverSource, EverSource and the subcontractor to be aware of any gas orders that they encounter.
Okay, and will they be instructed to contact National Grid directly and to make sure that that gets fixed before the street is completely sealed over?
Yes.
And there's no after-hours work planned, no weekend work, no evening?
Nope.
Okay. This is a public hearing, if there's anyone who wishes to speak. Mr. Lebo?
Surprise, surprise.
I am surprised.
Well, since we're the general contractors and engineers at 10 Short Street, we just want to know what's going on, because this is the first we heard of it. So who ordered it? Who's paying for it? What's going on? Does anybody know? I know we got two five-inch conduits going in, and I'm assuming it's for a service they are, we are doing over the units there, but I'm just trying to figure out, since I didn't know anything about it, and I'm representing MPA, and the president, Jeffrey Cohen, is here, listening. Thank you.
Okay. We have a representative from EverSource who can perhaps shed some light on this mystery.
I show this job being started by Boulder Property Group. They requested this work to be done.
Mr. Lebo, does that help you?
Is that the company right now? Do you know when this was requested?
Yes. Boulder Property.
When? When? What date? Do you have a question?
I don't know exactly when it was started.
Does anybody know who's paying for it, or is this just something that we're starting?
Mr. Lebo, please.
No, they would be paying for this. They would be paying for this.
Who's they?
The customer.
The customer just found out he's paying for this. This is the first time that we even knew about it.
Maybe we shouldn't.
Do, do you want electricity? We can hold it.
Is somebody going to give us the price of what this is costing? Do we know that?
Yes, the salesperson would contact the customer.
All right, I'm going to give you my card. You can contact them.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll be more than happy to hold this.
What do you think? Let's, can we hold it for the next meeting, so we can find out just what's going on?
Sure.
Thank you.
This is still a public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Joanne Riley, and I'm an owner at the condo association, 4852 Summit Avenue, which rounds the corner, so it's short and summit. And we just have some concerns. The letter that we got didn't have a lot of information. It sounds like that's a common problem, and we're just very interested in finding out more about how long the project's going to go. We had a lot of construction that took our parking and really a lot of noise. We're curious about how much noise there would be, certainly any risks in terms of leaks of any sort. And we're also interested in finding out if the street is going to be dug up, whether there's any potential for upgrades to our property, because, you know, we've been having some electrical problems that we've been told are in the street, and that they'll need to be dealt with, too. So, I'm not really sure what the next step is for us, or how we get answers, or how we weigh in here, but we would definitely like to, you know, submit those comments.
Okay. I'll turn it over to the N-Star, the EverSource representative.
They will be digging up the street. It's going to be approximately about 42 feet. Job should take probably maybe a week, week and a half, weather permit.
It says 220 feet.
220.
Ah, okay.
No, 41. As far as the other problems out there, I am not aware that they've been having problems. That's something I guess she would have to contact N-Star, but I have no knowledge of it.
Sure.
I'm also wondering, when you had mentioned that parking only in the construction zone, what that actually means, because it sounds like we're in the construction zone, that there wouldn't be any parking taken except for those, and what that would entail.
What number are you at?
48, 4852 Summit, so we're around the corner. So, the whole block there is us, yeah.
Well, right here, this is, just shows where we're at. This is this manhole here, and it's just going down and then crossing over on Short Street.
So where's Summit?
Summit is this way.
So going this way?
Down that way.
Going this way?
Can I get a copy of the plan, so I know where this is going in our property?
I show 220 feet to Summit, down this way. Whether it runs parallel or whatever.
Okay. You know what we're going to do? We're going to hold this. Why don't you take this out into the hall, and then next week, we can finish this up?
Okay.
Any, anyone else wish to speak on this particular item? We are holding it, and I'm going to move on to a public hearing on the petition of N-Star Electric doing business as EverSource Energy for permission to construct and a location for a line of conduits and manholes with necessary cables in the following public ways. Monford Street from 150 feet to Essex Street, Essex Street, 250 feet to Commonwealth Avenue, and Commonwealth Avenue, 200 feet from Essex Street to the town line. Mr. Ditto.
Mr. Chairman, as long as we're holding these requests, I'd like to hold this one. I need to have clarification on the conduit as it goes onto Commonwealth Avenue. So I'll be calling the engineer tomorrow to find out where the exact location is going to be.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who's come to speak on this item? I see none, so I'm going to hold this item, and please talk to the folks who need to be talked to in the hall on the previous item, and we will move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, we're running about a half hour late now, is a noise bylaw waiver, public hearing on the request of Cleveland Circle Development Associates LLC for a waiver of the noise bylaw in connection with the development at 375 to 399 Chestnut Hill Avenue, the Cleveland Circle Cinema Project.
These are some pictures, it just might help you get a better sense of what we're talking about. And I've got some extras of, if you want to see one. You can leave one.
She's got it.
Dave, you want to spare one?
Yes, please.
I'm Sherri Clancy from National Development.
Why don't you go to the mic? Just say your name again, I'm sorry.
I'm Sherri Clancy from National Development. I'm the project manager on the Circle project, which has been being permitted here in town over the last five or six months. It's at the site of the former Cleveland Circle Theater, and so in order to go forward with the project, we have to take down the former Cleveland Circle Theater. I have with me tonight Tom Burke, who's a project manager from the contractor, Cranshaw Construction. And basically, I've, there's two things that we want to discuss tonight, and both of them are some off-hours work. One of them is specifically to do with the demolition of the theater, and I put in your packets some pictures that show the canopy structure, and it's very close to the property line, and I also included some photographs to show you how close it is to the T's service and the T's wires and the catenary, you know, the high voltage lines. You can see, it's right in the picture. I've concluded them for you. So, we've been working with the T quite closely since the fall, and they're, they have given us a license to enter into their property for some distance with certain protections in place, but for this one aspect of the demolition, to take down that one section of canopy that I've shown you in the red dots in your picture, they're asking us to do this at off-hours, because they, there's revenue time, they don't want to shut down, you know, during commuter times, so they want to do that work between midnight and 4:00 a.m. We think it's about maybe less than three weeks, right?
Three weeks' worth of work.
And so, we've asked for the waiver for the noise bylaw from 11:00 to 7:00, so that we can set up and be ready, and then have a very productive time of work between midnight and 4:00, and then we have a little bit of cleanup and putting things away. That way, we can minimize the number of nights we have to do that by, you know, starting at 11:00 and getting all ready, so right at midnight, we can, we can go. We need flagmen, they need to, you know, do some protective things to make sure that there's no impact to the T to our work, or impact to any of our work, because it's a public safety thing, really. The second thing that's, actually, if you go to the very last page of the packet that I gave you, there are some areas, when we go forward to build the new hotel, there's a few areas that are hatched in blue, and those areas are immediately adjacent to some of the high voltage lines and catenary poles. Much later in the project, we may be needing to do the same kind of thing, maybe for some little discreet activities that we're doing within those areas that are shown hatched on the last page. If we have to do some, you know, work on the outside facade of the building, maybe with some steel erection or something, we may have to do some discreet activities off-hours. That will really be, when that will be, will be much later in the project, but I wanted to bring it to the board now, so you get the full picture. And that would be intermittent, it wouldn't be like every night, it would just be some specific night, weather permitting, and based on the T's schedule. If they say they want to do it on a weekend, we're going to have to go with what they say. So, this is kind of, we were hoping that might be a way to have the board work with us, so that if we had one of these intermittent activities, that we could perhaps by notifying someone in the Selectman's office a week ahead or something, to let you know just that we were going to be doing it, that would be a way to be, you know, respond to that quickly, because once they tell us, and if it's a good window of weather, that doesn't give you a chance to come in and do another whole meeting. So we were trying to see if there's a way we could do it with a condition.
We ran into some of this with the, the project at 111 Boylston Street, which is along the same line further inbound. I actually think the 111 Boylston had, there was more work closer to the tracks than this one, so they were, they were going at it for a long time, and also, the homes were closer to the noise, so there was a very big impact on the neighbors.
We have written letters to the neighbors and we gave copies to Patty, so we did give, we did notice the neighbors that were on, you know, the abutters list. So they have been given a letter about it.
So I noticed, you're going to be giving twenty-four hours' notice to the abutters that this work is going to happen. Did you ask for a time span?
Well, we'd like to start, the demolition, we already have a demolition permit and we've already started to take the building down. So we'd actually, if it's amenable to the board, we could, we could start as early as this week, you know, to get the canopy down. That would be maybe at the most, three weeks to pull those panels off the end of the building. They're all big concrete panels. We have precast panels.
So if we were to put a date range on the bylaw waiver, what would be the date range?
Well, for the demolition, I think we could take a date range of sixty days from now and that should really, or even forty-five days from now, right? Do we incorporate everything?
On the work, providing, we have about three weeks' worth of work scheduled. If all goes well and the MBTA allows us out there, next Monday would be the earliest we could start. For a three-week period, we think we can get all the panels done. Because the actual work time, once the lines are de-energized, is two and a half to three hours a night that we actually have to work, which is why it's a prolonged three-week process.
I was, I was asking for a little bit longer, because if we had to stop because we had bad weather or something, you know, we would get some.
That doesn't take into consideration.
No, I get it. Yes, Selectman Daly.
I'm going to say that thirty-five days is awfully long. You know, I think that they need three weeks, maybe thirty days to get it done and then you have to come back for an extension. I also think they need to have some kind of website that they tell all the abutters about, so people know, people can just go and check. Is the work starting this week? Is the work starting next week? And which are going to be the noisy nights? And able to do a little preparation in their home lives for the disruption.
We can agree to that.
Right, and.
I agree with Selectman Daly's suggestion.
Yeah, and that's how we handle, that's how we handled the other one at one-eleven Boylston Street. And what we found is that, I don't, looking out at the audience, I don't see many folks who've come to speak to this, but what I've, what we found with one-eleven is, once the noise started, then the complaints started and then if, if I recall, the, when they, when the developer came back to us for an extension, there were a lot of people here and we were able to, you know, work out some, you know, work out some of the issues. So I, so I, my inclination would be we do something similar. You know, we want to be reasonable, but we also want to be responsive to our constituents. Any comments, questions?
My impression from the Red Cab construction, which was similar in many ways, was there was no certainty as to what nights work was actually going to happen, because the T somewhat arbitrarily would change their mind.
They do. They say they couldn't get a flagman or something and then you're all set up and then not. But we can do a website, we could, that'd be easy for me to do, so.
Yeah, and we also found, if I recall, with the one-eleven, there was an issue with the Red Sox going into the postseason, so that affected the T, because they had to keep.
I hope we're not in the Red Sox postseason by the time we finish this. We'll be having a lot worse trouble than.
Because they had to keep the trains running until, you know, until Fenway Park let out, so they lost a few nights on that one.
Well, perhaps you could give us the website, call the selectman's office.
I will.
So that if there are neighborhood, neighbors who are concerned about it and complaining, we have the information to give to them.
Yes, I will do that.
To look up when these things are going to happen.
So if we were to do this for a thirty-day period, what should, what should the vote? When should we start the thirty-day period?
We should start it next week, next Monday.
So next Monday is?
Twenty-eighth.
March twenty-eighth. Three-twenty-eight to four? Twenty-seven?
What day of the week is four-twenty-seven?
Wednesday?
Would you consider going till Friday of that week, just so we don't have?
Four-twenty-nine?
And we're going to have a website set up and you're going to provide the selectman's office with the address, but you're also going to circulate that address to the abutters list that you have.
I will, yep. And we'll give it to the building department too, because they'll frequently be getting, would be the people I think that would get the call, so we'll give it to both.
And you're also agreeing to twenty-four hours' notice?
I'm agreeing to twenty-four hours' notice. But the notice can be on the website, right? I don't have to call everybody, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's reasonable. As long as, yeah, what I would suggest you do is at the beginning, you know, let everyone know that there is the website and.
I will.
And you can even solicit an email list or, you know. This is a public hearing, anyone wish to speak to this? I see none. Are we ready for a vote? Okay, I'll try to craft a vote on the fly and you can correct it. So I will move that we approve the request of Cleveland Circle Development Associates LLC for a waiver of the noise bylaw in connection with the development at three-seventy-five to three-ninety-nine Chestnut Hill Avenue for the period three-twenty-eight to four-twenty-nine, two thousand sixteen, with the condition that a website be set up, which will notify neighbors and other interested parties twenty-four hours in advance of any construction during the waiver period.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We're now going to review and a letter regarding the project we heard last week, four-twenty Harvard Street project, where they've applied for a forty-B project. And we are going to be providing comments on behalf of this board and town departments. Ms. Steinfeld?
Allison Steinfeld, planning director. I've incorporated some changes, which are improvements that the chair provided. You have copies in front of you and I, Selectman Daly, I emailed you a draft. There are just three suggested changes. They're indicated in red on the top draft. And obviously, if you would like additional changes, we still have time to incorporate them.
I'll just summarize for the public some of our comments. One, that Brookline supports the creation of affordable housing, appropriate affordable housing. But this particular project, as proposed to us, fails to adhere to or even acknowledge many of the objectives of the Department of Housing and Community Development's design guidelines. It's, the project is very out of scale with the neighborhood and there doesn't appear to be any setbacks, no space for landscaping, there's been no effort made to integrate the project into the existing development pattern of the surrounding properties. We acknowledge that this is an area that can have smart growth, but we objected to complete tear-down of the existing building as a violation of a smart-growth principle to reuse properties whenever possible. We comment on the lack of parking, or given the fact that there's retail-plus housing on the site. We comment on the automated parking system and are especially concerned about the reliability and the noise impact on the very, very close abutters to the properties. We also ask that the applicant explore the possibility of restricting the tenant pool to those who are at least fifty-five years of age. And I'll just comment that we, it's not a permissible objection to object to the effects on the public schools, so even though we would expect a project like this would have an impact on the schools, that's not one that can be considered. We comment on the lack of any usable open space. That's pretty much, and I think that the comments in here pretty much mirror the comments we heard from the public. So any, Selectman Heller?
Yeah, I think a lot of this has captured the comments that we heard and that we made at the public hearing last week. I am concerned about one sentence here. It's in the third to last paragraph of the letter, starting out, "The Board of Selectmen is confident." And that sentence, I'm not sure I think it's, I'm not sure I feel confident about this. And I think that the sentence is really superfluous, actually. If you were to take it out and just ask that, urge the MHP to take affirmative action to apply the state's forty-B design guidelines, I don't think it changes anything and it gives me a little more comfort, because I am not confident, given what we heard from this developer, that this could be a good development. So unless there were very, very significant changes. So that's just what I think about it.
Yeah, sure.
I've taken it out.
Yeah. Any other comments, suggested changes?
I just have one little typo.
Oh.
I'm going to be redpicking, but I'll just.
No, I appreciate it. Oh, you'll tell me later or?
Yeah, I'll give it to you right now.
Oh.
I saw one too. Allison, I have another one.
If I read it again, I'll find more.
Okay, so Selectman Daly, do you have any comments that you'd like to add?
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't there for the hearing. I did say some rail about being a pretty clear idea of what the problem was with the project.
Yeah, there were a lot of problems. Okay, I will move that we authorize the chair to execute a letter to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership as amended with this discussion, through this discussion regarding the application of four-twenty Harvard Associates LLC for a forty-B project at four-twenty Harvard Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly? Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you. You won't be seeing me for a while on this.
Four is enough for a while.
Right. Okay. Turn the page. Dr. Balsam, we're on to your budget. Budget for the Health and Human Services Department.
Good evening and thank you. So I'm Alan Balsam, Director of Public Health and Human Services, and I'm proud to present my budget for this year. It's been a, it's been a good year, busy, and I'd like to review with you a couple of the kind of more important issues that came up, if I could find it. Give me a sec. So I'll start with communicable disease outbreaks. We did have several communicable disease outbreaks that we needed to control, including a norovirus outbreak, a salmonellosis outbreak, and of course, we tracked the Ebola outbreak in Africa, although we had no cases in Massachusetts. We did follow twenty individuals from Brookline who returned from the Ebola-affected zone. And the way the state health department structured things is they were asking local health department officials to monitor people. These are mostly medical professionals who had gone over to provide care. And when they came back, we monitored them. We don't call it quarantine, we call it isolation. And these people all are professionals and self-isolated and we checked in with them daily. So there was, of course, well, I'm not going to tell you where these outbreaks were, I think I'll be discreet about that, but there were outbreaks at both restaurants and at a long-term care facility. We also had a number of cases, but we didn't call it an outbreak in one of the schools. The number-one communicable disease in Brookline remains influenza, and that's true, last year as well as this year, we did produce volume sixteen of healthy Brookline this past year, and that was a description of the communicable diseases that are most prevalent within Brookline. So influenza was number one, Lyme disease was number two. And this tracks with a campaign that we started last year regarding educating people about Lyme disease and ways that they can prevent the spread of Lyme disease. So in that regard, Lyme disease is much better diagnosed now than, say, it was five or ten years ago, but it still remains a kind of an intractable problem, because there are no vaccines for it. I think those were the main issues around communicable disease control. We did, of course, maintain the Medical Reserve Corps. We now have about two-hundred members, mostly medical professionals, but not exclusively such. They assisted us in our flu clinics and also staffing shelters with the CERT team at the, at the marathon, and they'll continue to do that again this year. We also launched the Emergency Preparedness Buddies Program with the CERT MRC members in conjunction with Ruth Ann and the Council on Aging. The Buddies Program, I think, it has legs, it's an innovative program which seeks to link well-trained volunteers with older adults or other folks who are socially isolated and infirm. We know from looking at emergencies, people who are socially isolated and infirm often get left behind. And this is an attempt, based on research that we've done, to link individual with individuals, so that if something untoward happens, there's actually a real-life person who can look in on somebody and make sure that they're, they're taken care of, that they're accommodated. So the Buddies Program, we launched a pilot last year and we're expanding it this year. We also maintained the Friends of Public Health Organization. We have a hundred and fifty members of that group. We lost our chair this year, Bruce Cohen left, he moved to Rockport in Savannah, Georgia, Savannah, Georgia, I should say. And so Dr. Tony Schlaff, who is the Associate Dean of Tufts Medical School, School of Public Health, has assumed the chair. We also have two new members that you appointed to our advisory council, Gretchen Stoddard and Alina Noreen, and I'm very grateful for the addition of those two well-qualified members. In terms of the Friends, we gave out some awards this year. Bruce got the Public Health Leadership Award and Renee Fier. Bruce got the Public Health Leadership Award, and Rene Fierman from the Brookline Food Pantry received the Carlin Community Health Award. We also produced the 19th Annual Public Health Policy Forum with Governor Dukakis that attracted a couple of hundred mem, uh, folks over to the senior center, and we'll be having our 20th anniversary this year with Governor Dukakis. And our program this year is, in June, is entitled, "20 Years of Advocating for Healthcare Reform: Looking Back, Looking Forward," and we have a really great panel, including one of Mel's friends who agreed to do it from the GIC. Thank you, Mel, for that. In terms of, oh, I should also say, we, we put out the latest volume of Healthy Brookline, which is volume 17, and that's the results of the Behavior Risk Factors Survey for, for youth. And there was a lot of interesting stuff in there, if you care to read it. It's kind of lengthy, but what we're seeing is a decline in substance use by, by teens in, in school, and that's good news. That's marijuana, alcohol, um, other drugs, including tobacco. All of those are declining, and I think there are temporal trends there, but there's also the fact that we're doing some good work on that. However, the bad news is, and you may have seen the article in the tab this past week, or maybe it was the week before, levels of stress and anxiety and depression among our youth is, is, these levels are increasing, and this is of great concern. This is School Wellness Week, the week we're in right now, and we have programs virtually daily about issues related to this and other issues in the schools. And we'll be focusing again on these issues during Public Health Week, which is coming up in a few weeks, and you'll learn more about that as it approaches. So a lot going, going on there as well. Finally, on the information technology side, we're migrating to our new Acela software package. We're optimistic that this will be a good, a good thing for both the town and for our employees, and of course, I said that when we went to the last software package also. So, but hopefully, we'll do better than the state of Massachusetts did when they rolled out their healthcare reform software package. So, again-
It's not a high bar.
Right. We aim low, and we often achieve. So, again, this, this year is coming up, we have Public Health Week in a couple of weeks, we have the policy forum coming up, a lot of things going on, and our staffing pattern remains constant. We did bring on a new employee, Elmon Hendricks, who's our new weights and measures inspector. He also happens to be the head of the Rotary and is very active over at the, the post down the street. So having him around is really a breath of fresh air, and I want to thank Bill McGrady for turning us on to all the veterans who have been working in our group. They're really outstanding. And speaking of people working in our group, we have 10 graduate students from all of the schools of public health. They extend our work, they are great, they actually are optimistic and believe in change can happen. So they, they kind of lower the cynicism quotient over in our group and are really a great addition. And finally, although money remains scarce, I did manage to raise a couple hundred thousand dollars this year to keep, you know, to keep the, the ball rolling, and, you know, we have about six people on soft money, and this is, of course, a big concern for me going forward. I'm hoping to tap into, not this year, but next year, into the dispensary money to fund our substance abuse programs in the school. So I've mentioned this to Mel and Austin, and when I come, when I write the budget in the fall, you'll see something like that in there. But one of my goals is to make sure everybody who's on soft money is taken care of and that there's no gap in that coverage. So I think I'll stop. That's, those are the, the high points, but I'm glad to entertain any questions you might have.
So how's the marijuana dispensary going from your perspective?
I think it's going well. We're over there virtually every day to see what's cooking, and, you'll excuse me.
Upward, downward.
There, you know, let me tell you, the management team over there is excellent. The facility is absolutely gorgeous. I don't know, have you guys been in there?
Yeah.
It's worth, it's worth checking out. And by the way, go over to Franklin, too. That place is pretty impressive. When you have $5 million to invest in a 60,000-square-foot facility, you know, that's something. So I think they're doing a good job. I haven't seen any lines, and that was my main concern, was the, the volume issue. They did have the first three weeks by appointment only, and now they're, they're opening it up, and we're going to continue to, you know, hold their feet to the fire and make sure that everything is, is done properly, and, but so far, so good.
Yeah, you know, I'm by there, I go by there a lot, and I haven't seen any impact to traffic or very little foot traffic, very little auto traffic. So I think so far, the impact, I think, has been minimal, and I think that, and that was mirrored last night at a Brookline Neighborhood Association meeting where this came up, and some of the abutters were mentioning, some, some of the abutters on White Place were mentioning that they haven't seen much of an impact either. So I'm, I'm just glad that that's the way-
Me, too.
-it's playing out.
Chair Roschinsky and I took a tour of the facility when it was first opened, and I think part of what happened in terms of the, the controlling the traffic and the parking is that the facility did a very nice job of putting forth a brochure on where parking was, what paid parking in the neighborhood, the lot, the various lots, et cetera. And I think they also secured a separate, completely separate lot for staff. So I think that's helped a lot, and, you know, I'm pleased about that. I, I think that that was one of our big worries. Of course, we didn't have a very significant winter. Knock on some wood. So we haven't had that-
Right.
...problem to contend with. But I think that, that, that's been positive.
Selectman Franco?
I want to begin by, by thanking you for the work you've done on substance abuse, your diligence, along with Mary.
Thanks, Nancy.
It's really paid dividends, and I think this most recent report bears that out. I want to ask about something you didn't mention in your opening remarks, and that's the obesity rate amongst schoolchildren. I, I noticed in the performance indicators that we've inched it down from 20% of Brookline school-aged children being considered obese down to 15%. You know, I know we have an active Brookline on the Moves campaign. I wonder if you'd just sort of talk a little bit about why you think there's that decrease and maybe some of the efforts that you're making, maybe in line with sort of national efforts to bring attention to healthy eating and these, and these types of issues.
Well, of course, this is an issue close to my heart, being a nutritionist first and foremost. First of all, we have, we have a town that lends itself to physical activity. We have a very walkable town. Our park and our open space system is second to none. I think most people agree with that. We have a town you can actually walk around and you don't have to get into a car, except if you live in South Brookline. But there's a relatively good transportation system here, and I think all of those factors, you know, basically allow people to be more physically active, not, not, not even mentioning the fact that if you look around Brookline Village and Coolidge Corner, there are so many opportunities for people to engage in physical activity. So that's one side of the coin. The other side, of course, is food and nutrition. We have a, a school food service. You know, I know, I don't, I don't know what the new, um, system is going to be, but I know under the, the former director, this was a very high priority, sourcing local foods, having a meatless day once a week, having non-meat entrees. We're very interested in asking people to eat lower on the food chain, not simply to reduce the risk of disease, but also to reduce our carbon footprint. So I've spent a lot of time talking to people of how can they reduce their carbon footprint by giving up a, a little bit on the meat side and eating more fruits and vegetables and whole grains. So, but, so we have the, the food pantry this year. We had a project with them to increase access to healthy foods there. Renee is very much in favor of that. Our, our senior center is very engaged with good, healthy eating. And so it, and plus, we have a, we have a, a farm over at Waldo Street. If you go over there and look in those, those giant trucks, there's a farm going on there, not to mention Allendale. So there are many opportunities that we can leverage in order to assist people in making healthy food choices. A couple of years ago, we had the lowest rates of obesity in the state among suburban community, among any community in, in Massachusetts. We're still among the, the top three or four in terms of low rates of both overweight and obesity. So we're doing well for kids and also for adults. Of course, you don't rest on your laurels, we have a long way to go.
Selectman Green?
Yeah. One thing I noticed in your objectives, you state you want to provide a youth diversion program in cooperation with the police, Brookline Court, and Brookline Public Schools. Could you describe that as well as describe how that differs from existing programs to divert youth out of the criminal justice-
We've actually had that program for several years with the cops, and what it's about, it, it's run by Mary Minot and her group in the schools and the police, and it's basically to keep kids out of the criminal justice system when they abuse drugs. And it involves mandating that they, they go to counseling. It also mandates drug testing, random drug testing on a regular basis, and there are sanctions if they violate, they have to sign a contract in order to be part of the diversion program, and if they violate the terms of that contract, then they do move into the criminal justice system. It's been pretty successful. We don't want kids, you know, to, to be in, you know, be involved with the courts and the cops if we can avoid it. We, there's too much of that going on. So if there's ways to divert people out of that and still accomplish our goal, that's what we want to try to do.
Selectman Daly, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, I was delighted to see the progress Buddies Program getting launched off. My current boss would be disabled here and possibly very sympathetic to people who might have issues and, and you might have an emergency. I, I was happy to hear you mention tobacco in terms of kids' substance abuse, because I feel like tobacco can be so destructive over the long term, and especially when people start, when they're in their teens. So, but I'm glad to hear you're working on that. And I have a question on Lyme disease, which I've heard some fellow people who've gotten these kind of debilitating long-term Lyme problems, and, and, you know, they often are misdiagnosed because they were questioned those. So I know that now there are researchers in the area, and they get northeastern, in particular, working on the PULC dosing of antibiotics. And I wonder if you're keeping tabs on that, and, you know, when should start giving people information about that?
Well, I'm, I'm in contact with a couple of researchers over at the General, and there is a number of, there are a number of studies going on about that now. So I think we're, I don't think we're that close to a vaccine, but we, I think we may be closer to a screening tool than we've been in the past. That's the thing that I'm most excited about, is a screening tool that would predict disease just among the general population.
What I'm talking about is a new type of treaty at Y2HAB, and they're saying that because it's violent, it hides in your system, you get a bunch of antibiotics, you stop, and then you take the antibiotics again as a set schedule.
Well, I know that there's research going on about that, but I don't know what the state of it is now, but I'll, I'll check it out.
Okay.
Thanks, Nancy.
And I'll, I'll end with a topic that's on everyone's mind. Spilled water, no. Wild turkeys. Yeah. What's, what's your department's involvement with that, and what's happening with our wild turkey population?
Sure. Well, first of all, there's a lot of wild animals around here, and most of them are four-footed, but not all of them. Wild turkeys are protected, are protected by, by state law.
Really?
And so therefore, we're very prudent when it-
I ain't going for Thanksgiving.
And we're very prudent about taking steps. We do have a door hanger that we distribute in neighborhoods where there have been complaints about wild turkeys that tell people what they can do to move the turkeys out. Number one is make sure that their trash and garbage is, is well-secured. I can't tell you how many times we've gone out there, people fetching about the wild turkeys, and then they're feeding their, their animals, their dogs and cats out in the backyard, or they have their, their garbage cans without a cover. So that's number one. Number two, turkeys respond to hosing them down. So if you have a hose handy and you hose them down, they'll usually retreat and go to somebody else's property. Also, if they accost you on the street, I recommend opening your umbrella in their face, that scares the heck out of them, and they run away. But they're, they're tough critters. They're tough, and we've had to take down a couple of toms. Last year, we took two toms down. I didn't personally do this, I left that to people who carry guns, but that's only in the worst of cases. But there's a lot of critters out there. There's coyotes, there's foxes, there's wild, there's geese. I hear all the time from people who are complaining about the geese over at the reservoir over there. But, you know, we have to learn to live with these, these wild animals, and I think a little patience is sometimes goes a long way.
I, I actually had an experience this week with the wild turkeys. They, my yard is fenced in the back, but my neighbor's is not, my neighbor's yard. So they, they had a lovely time in the backyard, and then they came walking out onto the street, and they don't respond to horns. They don't, they just saunter across the street. So, I mean, you have to wait until they've decided to leave and not occupy the street anymore. There had to be about 10 of them. So they clearly were traveling in a pack.
Well, if wild turkeys can exist in Harvard Square, they can exist anywhere.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Balsam.
You're welcome.
And next one up is Veterans Services, Mr. McGrady.
Good evening and thank you. Last year was a really good year for us. One of our biggest accomplishments was getting people's claims and their healthcare through a lot faster. The VA developed a expedited, expedited claims process, and it was a little sticky when they first rolled it out, but it, it's working better, and with the help of my assistant, Michelle, who's actually really great at doing the administrative portion of it, we've got our claims, so they're very clean, so they go through very quickly. So we've had a lot of success for people, filed compensation claims and got results, sometimes as short as eight weeks, but usually around 120 days. Some claims are longer, so, you know, someone's going to call me tomorrow and go, "I saw that on TV, it took me six months." Depends on the claim, but a lot of our claims have been coming through very quickly. And where that's important, an example, I got a call today from a 95-year-old World War II veteran whose rent is $2,600 a month. I bet it wasn't $2,600 a month when he retired, and it's, it's hard. And he was looking at 115 benefits. I talked to him. I haven't brought him in the office yet. I don't think he's going to qualify for that. He is getting a small VA pension, a little over $100, and we may be able to bring that up to 500, maybe even $1,000. However, when you're 95, you don't want to wait three years for your results. So if we can do claims cleanly and get them in, that'll work very well. The same thing with healthcare. We do the healthcare application at our office. I physically bring it over and have them process it while I'm standing there, so that puts us at the top of the pile. Usually, they can get a, um, initial appointment with a doctor within about two weeks. If, if I have a young man or woman that needs PTSD screening, I'll actually bring them to the urgent care and either, and sit there with them and get a immediate referral so that they don't have to wait six to eight weeks to get in the system, because that's very, very important. And that's been working pretty well, and we're, we're rolling along. We asked for level funding this year. The other thing that's been very successful, Dr. Balsam alluded, was the jobs program that y'all gave us. Some of our successes, one of our alumni now works for the EPA, I believe he's an inspector. Uh, one of- One of our alumni is now the weights and measures guy and doing a really good job. One of our people was a little different than our standard model. He was a veteran who was older, was an engineer, was laid off, was having a hard time finding a position, probably because of age discrimination. In determination, I'm very few people that inspire me more than this gentleman. He decided that if engineering wasn't going to work out for him anymore, he retrained for IT. He worked at the IT department with Kevin Stokes and his people. It gave him great experience. He paid for his own training for different courses and qualifications, and now he's a IT director for a small company and started a whole new career. So it's, it's been a success across the board. We had a, another gentleman that's an engineer that had a contract job for a year with the State Department overseas. So we've had some very good successes with that program. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
How about compliments?
Yeah, go for it.
I want to thank you, Mr. McGrady. I mean, the compassion you show, the attention, the diligence is unbelievable. I mean, you organize two community celebrations a year, each year. And in addition to that, you, you really, in some cases, to hold somebody's hand while they, they deal with the VA, the bureaucracy of the federal government. And it's just, it's impressive to me. So thank you for everything you do on behalf of the board and as a citizen of the town as well.
I'll echo that.
Mr. Chairman?
Selectman Daley?
I'm happy to hear that the time for claims getting processed has gone down, but I know in the past, Mr. McGrady's had a problem when he was trying to get some of our veterans actually into the VA hospital or into the VA hospital. Has that improved?
I believe it's improved greatly. That's not, I can't take credit for that. The VA had some problems, and they've made some significant changes. I actually get all my health care at the VA, and I have some of the best health care I've ever had in my whole life, so I'm going to give them huge kudos. For the most part, it's running a lot smoother, and if it doesn't, that's when we'll do the hand-holding, we'll get someone through, but we're not letting anyone fall. It's a better program, Selectman Daley, than it was a couple of years ago over there, and we're trying to work with them, and they've been actually very good at working with us too. So it's been a win-win situation.
Okay. Glad to hear it.
Thank you. Any other? Selectman Franklin?
I'll just ask when the next flag raising will be. Is it scheduled yet?
I did schedule it, and then I realized I scheduled it on Marathon Day, so I have to call up tomorrow.
Not a good day to do it.
Probably not a good day. I'm going to call up tomorrow and probably schedule it for the following Monday, if it's okay with the family. And that'll be for Robert Murphy, who was a, I'm doing this off the top, my head, a 40-year employee here. His wife also was an employee here, and he was a Korean War veteran. And he probably was the commander of the VFW III, maybe four times. A lot of it was before my tenure, but he commanded for years since I've been here. And he was just a wonderful man, and he passed earlier this year, and we're going to remember him. So that'll be coming up in the, in the really happy department. We worked with a family, the Litterman family. Martin is a Marine Corps veteran who lives here in town. His brother was a doctor, served in World War II, then came back during the Vietnam War and showed heroism, heroism that is extraordinary, and, and lost his life in the process, and was initially erroneously listed as accidental death. They corrected that on the Marines who died, they didn't correct on the Navy personnel. The family's been working for two decades to do it. We work with Congressman Kennedy's office, who did a superb job, and his record's been changed to Killed in Action, and his Purple Heart is now sitting in Congressman Kennedy's office in Newton, and we're working with the scheduling office to bring him here to have the family presenting that Purple Heart after 40 years.
Wow.
It's a, it's a really nice accomplishment. We may be doing Memorial Day, we may do it in a separate ceremony, depends on the schedule of the congressman, because his people really did the bulk of the work, and I want to make sure he's here to present it. We also found the World War I plaque that honored our veterans who passed during the First World War, gave their lives in the First World War. The people at the, at the corner of Cypress and Boilson Street, the Borders, Restores Our Borders are fixing it for us, they're doing it at cost, and our cost to the town, the VFW's paying for that. And we're going to put that back, give it back to the town, probably in May, either at Memorial Day or a separate ceremony too. It's a, it's a beautiful piece, and it also shows what good neighbors we have, that the Borders, the Restores Our Borders would be nice enough to do that for us and make it happen to honor our veterans. So it's a really exciting time coming up, and I won't go into secrets, but I'm hoping to improve the outside of our VFW American Legion posts this summer also, so it's upswing across the board.
Cool. Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGrady.
Thank you very much.
Next one up is Council on Aging. Ms. Dobek.
Ruth Ann Dobek, the Director of the Council on Aging. And we too are proud of this year's accomplishments and budget. As I've been going around meeting with the budget committees in the Council on Aging, I've been saying that there's four legs of our chair of funding for the Council on Aging, our municipal, our state, our federal, and then the private and nonprofit grants. And with fingers crossed, this is one year when all four legs of that chair are quite stable, and that's highly unusual. Usually, one is very weak or tottering, so hopefully that will remain. The municipal budget, as submitted, is a level-funded request with a slight increase in some of our supplies. And as the board knows, I've stood before you a couple of years asking for some transfers, and mainly, it's due to our success where the senior center is filled to the brim with people and therefore have been using some of our building supplies and office supplies. So that's like, an increase will help us out. On the state level, we're really pleased, last year, and a, and a thank you to Governor Baker and our team, when you see the, the state legislative team, they've increased the state formula grant for elders to $9 per elder, and we still use the 2010 census figures, which means that Brookline will be receiving from the state $97,000, which all goes for, for personnel. And that's the highest amount that we've seen, and again, we're very grateful for the state for supporting elders. On the federal level, we've applied once again for CDBG funds, and while we don't have the final figures, we're optimistic that our taxi discount program and job training program for low-income seniors will continue. And then on the nonprofit, of course, that's probably one of the reasons that Selectman Daley is not present in the room. We hope we didn't hurt her knee too much for some of the Dancing with the Stars. Everyone in this room on the, on the board was a strong supporter, and we were very pleased that the Dancing with the Stars last year helped bring us a brand-new van. And this year, because of Selectman Daley's generosity, we've started a program for dementia families to provide free respite care, and we're very proud of that. I actually just heard a statistic which matches what we were talking about with Dr. Balsam on, on stress, that stress for caregivers is the equivalent of smoking a pack of cigarettes. When you think about the health of caregiving and, and stress, that, that's a remarkable health indicator that we really need to deal with. So the fact that we're able to start this respite program through the generosity of supporters is really wonderful. In addition, the annual Autumn Benefit helps continue to fund the van. I remind people, when we started with the van, all of it is funded through private donations. We were nervous about how much we could have the van run, and we started very slowly, part-time, three days. In the last three years, we've been able to run that van five days full-time, all on private donations. So we're very proud about that. Some of our services this year run from, again, on the Alzheimer's theme, we've started a memory café, which, once a month, caregivers and people who are suffering from dementia can come in for a specialized program at the center. And that's been a very successful program, again, trying to reduce some of the stress with yoga, music, and other kinds of therapies for, for those members, and that's been very successful. I think people, one of the highlights of our last year was the Party of a Century, where we honored our centenarians, and a couple have now since passed, of course, the, the famous Ethel Weiss of Irving's, and another gentleman, Max Siegel, who was 103. And for those who were at the party, Max would not sit down until he recited "Oh Captain, My Captain" from, from memory and was singing Autumn Leaves. And so to send off our seniors with such dignity and respect is really heartwarming, you know, for our oldest seniors. Some of the other new programs that we're proud of starting are for the most vulnerable elders of our community. We've partnered with the Boston Food Bank, and we're able to deliver 35 pounds of food per month to those who live in housing and other low-income seniors. This evening, we just had our annual Stock Ourselves celebration, where local restaurants donate food and seniors stock the food pantry with both financial donations and canned goods. And again, we're ensuring that no Brookline resident ever is hungry. So again, some of the highlights. We've also done a lot on diversity at the Council on Aging. We have a very strong Asian program, Russian program, Spanish immersion program, and have really opened our doors to the LGBT community, including a bereavement group that's been very successful, and another Alzheimer's support group for the LGBT community. In addition, we will be coming back to this board to give another report on our age-friendly initiative, which Selectman Daley co-chairs, along with Frank Carroll from Brookline Can and myself, and we're doing the final touches on our next report. One of the highlights that I've also, this budget season, been talking about is the Fire Department received a grant through the, with the age-friendly support, and they've been putting in smoke detectors in seniors' homes, and it's very significant. There was a tragic fire in Natick a couple of weeks ago where a senior died in her home. And of course, the tragedy, in addition to smoking in her bedroom, was that there was no working smoke detectors. So this grant is still accepting new applicants. So if we have any homeowners out there listening on TV and they want these free smoke detectors, I urge them to contact the Fire Department or the Council on Aging. We've been getting great reviews on, on that program, and again, very important. Those are some of the, the highlights. We also are really pleased with our TRIPS grant, which we received from the State Department of Transportation, which is providing driving retirement counseling. And the statistic that we're telling people is one needs to prepare at least seven to 10 years of, of no longer driving. You're having those many years of driving retirement. So we need as much transportation and support as possible, and this program has been a great success, both for Newton and Brookline. In addition, we always like to lay out some of our challenges as, as we go forward, and I think the, the greatest one facing the community will be around our transportation needs. As I always say, transportation is more and more and still more, and I think that's something we're trying to work with the new Uber and Lyft and see, is there a way that they're going to be comparable with our taxi system, which provides, you know, a 25% discount for low-income seniors? So how can we stay with this new technology and these new driver-sharing programs? How can they continue to give back to the, the senior community? So that's a, a challenge. But all in all, a wonderful year, and looking forward to our, to our next.
Selectman Daley?
I just want to add a couple of things. One, the senior center has a tremendous amount of volunteer help, mainly seniors, not the other seniors, of teaching classes or whatever. And it's, it's really heartwarming to see it, but the place could not operate without a huge amount of volunteer help that would, that would supplement the budget we're able to give them. And the second thing I just want people to sort of start thinking about is the senior center, it's full all the time. If you kind of book a room for something, you have to kind of take a line. And we're having some projects in the area that are probably going to increase the number of seniors. So, you know, at some point, we may need to be talking about some expansion.
On the volunteer note, I can just thank you, Nancy, for, for bringing up our volunteers. We are celebrating our volunteers in April, so the statistic is clear in my head because we just sent out the invitations. We had, in this fiscal year, 328 volunteers, and many of those volunteers are doing multiple jobs and many hours. So as Nancy correctly reported, we would have to shut our doors down without those volunteer help.
Anyone else have any questions, comments?
Just, just thank you for the wonderful job you do. I think it's obviously very, very important, the council, the senior center is always hopping, and that's great to see, and it's wonderful. The seniors have such a warm and vibrant place to be and interact with one another. So I think it's incredibly valuable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
One of the things you spoke about, about Ruth Ann, was, was transportation issues, and particularly Uber and Lyft and some of these newer transportation models. One of the things that I've, I've observed over the past couple of months is the MBTA has had conversations about increasing fares and making, potentially making some changes to, to paratransit services, the ride, is the senior community in the metro Boston region has been, for lack of a better way to put it, up in arms about it. I'm wondering what you're hearing from Brookline seniors about MBTA service and potentially the greatly increased cost that they're going to bear to, to utilize MBTA trains and buses?
Thank you. Yes, a couple of years ago, there was a proposal to increase the ride dramatically, and the seniors of Greater Boston really fought from, at the State House level, and they did roll back that dramatic increase. I think they were saying to go up to $7, and they dropped it down to $4. So I suspect that we will hear some of that from the whole Greater Boston advocacy effort. On the other hand, some of their new proposals may actually be helpful, some of their pilot where they are contracting with Veterans Cab and the, and also talking with Uber for some less expensive models. So I think the MBTA is definitely on our watch list, and you will be hearing a lot more about it in the coming months.
I think that, that does it for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Notice as, as it gets later, the number of questions gets fewer. Next one up is the library. Next one up is the library, Ms. Slimon. I see you have an entourage with me.
I do. Sarah Slimon, library director, and, I'm sorry?
Could I introduce?
Oh, sure.
I would like to reintroduce Sarah Slimon, if you don't mind. Those of us on the Board of Trustees are very proud of Sarah, and very happy with the work she's done here. And I just wanted to also note that many of us are here tonight to support Sarah and to support the library budget. We have Jen Reese, Vice Chair Poojametta, Secretary Judith Vanderke, Magdalene Moran, Karen Livingston, Reggie Healy, Carol Axelrod are all here to give our, oh, and Jonathan Margolis, right? Thank you.
Can't forget Mr. Margolis.
He wasn't in the row, so I missed him. But we're all here to put our support behind a thriving library system, and I'll leave it to Sarah to take it away.
Thank you.
Thanks. Sorry about that, he surprised me. So, Sarah Slimon, library director, and I haven't been here in a while. Hi, everyone. Our fiscal '17 budget sees a small increase of 2.3%. Most of that reflects increases in personnel, I'm sorry, fixed costs for personnel, collective bargaining, and a small increase in our materials budget, which is required to keep us eligible for the Mass Board of Library Commissioners state aid program. We've had a really great year at the library. It's been very rewarding and innovative. In technology, we hired a new Assistant Director for Technology from Harvard University, Hank Sway. Since his arrival, he has managed to replace our entire public-facing internet infrastructure, which was collapsing under its own weight. And so, that was an immense task, and he did it with incredible speed and fiscal responsibility. It was surprisingly affordable. We have also added a 3D printer, which we got through a grant, so we are able to offer 3D printing services. We haven't fully developed the model, so don't everyone rush our doors tomorrow looking for 3D printing, but we have printed out a few things, and we're building some programming around the 3D printer. Robin Brenner, our teen librarian, has printed an entire chess set made of fictional characters. We had a contest from patrons to select the characters that were represented on the chessboard, and it came out beautifully. In our outreach channel, we had a very successful year with our new book bike, which was paid for by the Friends of the Library. Anyone who hasn't seen it, the bike, it looks like an old ice cream truck, and a librarian pedals it around and goes to the farmer's market, and to Hebrew Senior Housing, and a variety of other locations around town, and circulates library books. And that is a really amazing program. We circulated over 500 items in the about dozen times we went out last year, and we're looking to expand that program this year to include Housing Authority, recreation summer camps, and a variety of other places in town. Our collections have taken a really exciting turn for the whimsical this year. We launched a cake pan collection last year, so we circulate novelty cake pans for folks who don't have the inclination to collect them themselves, or the storage space to keep them. And that program is doing very well. We also launched a games and gaming collection. So, we have board games and card games, as well as video games. We have books about games that include game rules, books about the history of games, as well as the art of games. So, we have some magnificent coffee table books about the art of video games particularly. And we just recently launched a coloring books collection. So, I don't know if you're all aware, but there's a wild craze now for adult coloring. It's supposed to be very calming and therapeutic. So, we have a couple of dozen coloring books that you can check out from the library. You can check out a set of colored pencils from us. And you get to, for the first time in the history of public libraries, write in one of our books and return it with no penalty. So, that's doing quite well. If you look on all of our social media channels, we featured quite a few of our patrons' works of art. And once the books fill up, we are going to do art exhibits, so we can show off people's projects. Our programming has been excellent this year. We have offered multiple superheroes programs, and those have been wildly popular. We've drawn over 200 people to each of them. I think they came four times last year. We also had a Star Wars Day that attracted about that many folks. Our Brookline Reads event with Celeste Eng, the author, attracted 200 people, and over 300 people attended that entire series of programs. We recently introduced a play space at Coolidge Corner, where we have toys for small children to play with, practice large motor skills, little cars, and tunnels, and climbing structures, and tents and things. And that's proved to be extremely popular, drawing sometimes upwards of 100 children and caretakers, and that's offered several times a week. So, we've had a pretty exciting year at the library.
So, this 3D printer?
Yes.
You've piqued my interest.
Yeah.
So, how does it work? You sign up in advance and?
We haven't fully rolled out a public-facing program yet, but we will soon, and I can let you know. But essentially, what we're hoping to offer is times that you can sign up, and you bring in your design, and we feed it into the software, and then it sort of slowly prints your thing. You might need to come back the next day and get it, depending on how complicated it is.
Is it expensive to run? I would?
Not particularly, no. It came with quite a lot of the supplies as part of the grant, but we buy the plastic in big spools, like about this big, and it just feeds the filament in, and they're really not terribly expensive.
So, unlike inkjet printers?
Right. Actually, it's more affordable than running a normal printer.
Really?
And we've actually augmented the 3D printer as well, with some smaller maker technologies. We're doing some, something called robo-cubes, and they're little robotic cubes that you can build small computers out of. And there's another one that they're doing with straws. So, it's, this whole maker movement is thriving over at the library.
Selectman Green?
Actually, this 3D printer thing is pretty interesting, but I mean, it's a cutting-edge technology that has a lot of applications, both good and bad.
Yes.
So, I'm wondering if you're doing any programming to sort of help maybe high school students or other students, you know, learn not only how to use it, but, you know, the sort of technology behind it, and enable them to maybe come up with new ideas? I mean, it seems to be that we should use it for more than just printing out, you know, cute chess sets. I mean, it's an opportunity to do a lot more that could be really, really exciting, as well as useful in town.
I agree. And we are, as I said, we're still sort of piloting it with the 3D printing, but we are offering also, as I mentioned, some other maker technologies that have rolled out already through the Children's Department. And I'm not sure if you've heard about our partnership with Girls Who Code. We do offer Girls Who Code classes at the library. I believe they're twice a week, and we had to add a second session, because it was booked with a gigantic waiting list. So, I think we're servicing 30 teenage girls a week, teaching them how to do computer code.
Selectman Heller?
Do you program some boys to code? I have a son, and my daughter's over there.
Yeah. We don't currently have anything specific to boys, because the Girls Who Code program is sponsored by all the big computer companies, and they were doing outreach to public agencies. And we just felt that it was an opportunity that we couldn't pass up to have a free instructor providing that service to our community.
Selectman Heller?
So, a much less exciting subject. Notice that in your fiscal year 2017 objectives, you talk for number three about transitioning all three libraries away from bottled water to filtered tap water. And yet, I notice that in the budget, you have not a lot of money, but it's money. And you actually, in fiscal year 2017, you're requesting $500. In the past, you've spent even more. And as you may recall, we do have a bylaw that was passed last year about bottled water, and Selectman Green is leading the charge on a committee to look into further recommendations to town meetings. So, I'm wondering why $500 seems actually quite a lot. That seems like 500 bottles of water.
Okay, sure. Let me answer that. So, if you look in Section 2 of our budget, you'll see that we did expend money on bottled water last year, and that we did request bottled water money for this year, but that was before the bylaw passed. And my understanding from Melissa and Austin is that money actually is rolling back into our supply budget. We complied almost immediately with the new regulation. So, we haven't been offering bottled water in quite a long time. We did, used to have the big five-gallon bubbler dispensers, and we got rid of those almost immediately after that was passed, and have replaced them with tabletop water filters. So, I came to an agreement with Melissa and Austin that we could preserve the fund to continue to pay for the fully recyclable water filters, the actual filters that go on the filtered water dispensers, that the town department, building department, very kindly sent a plumber over and plumbed all of those in, in all of our locations.
Okay, so then when it says bottled water, it doesn't mean bottled water? It means bottled water filter?
It's just for the filters, yeah. And I believe it's going to be sort of, maybe not reflected in this budget, but the next one certainly, that line will sort of go away, and that money will go back into our main supply line.
I noticed that circulation fiscal year '15 went down a bit. So, are you seeing book circulation going down and electronic circulation going up? Or, you know, what are the trends?
We are, have been struggling with falling circulation for, pretty much since the economy started rebounding, so before my time. Public libraries traditionally see huge surges in circulation and visits when the economy is in distress, because when people look to cut back on things that aren't necessary, they think, oh, you know, I could get that book for free from my library. But then, when they have spending money again, they just figure they get it from Amazon. But, so, we have been working very, very closely. We do have a collection development head who is very sharp, and he and I have been working closely together to turn the tide. And I think by the time I stand here next year, we're going to be back in the positive. We're very focused on aligning our expenditures with our circulation, so that we're not using out-of-date models. So, if paperback fiction, for example, isn't circulating well anymore, we're reallocating some of that money to a collection that is circulating with very high demand. We do get purchase alert reports every week that indicate how many holds there are on titles. So, if there are 25 holds on a title, and we only own one copy of it, that's an indication to us that we need to buy another one. To answer your digital circulation question, we have seen increases in our ebook circulation every year, significant increases. It's, paper materials are still our bread and butter, though.
Right. Selectman Daly, are you still with us?
I have a suggestion. I'll throw out the page of the printer, which I think is all about. I actually read on the Internet about a young man who needs prosthetic hands, but works in a, you know, with a hand, and needs a prosthetic hand with a 3D printer. So, I'm going to suggest that you have a competition among schoolchildren, and those who get those kind of ideas, get a shot at the 3D printer. And I think that will get the word out that you have it, and will also be a good tool for kids to have to think a little bit.
That's a great idea. I'll take it to the head of the Children's Services.
Selectman Franco?
I want to find out what's going on with the Coolidge Corner Branch Library, and the potential for relocation, and certainly for renovation. Can you just sort of give us the 10,000-foot view about what's going on today, and what we can expect in the near future?
Sure. So, that project, I've been working on that since I got here, and in the last year-ish, we had a consultant come in, funded by our foundation, to do the building program, which is the first building block in the grant application process for the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, library construction grants. Following that, the town funded Schwartz Silver to do a feasibility study for us, and they came up with five ideas about where and how we could, you know, serve the community best through our newer modified facility. The least expensive option was just giving the current building as it stands a facelift. The most expensive option was relocating, building a brand-new building at another location. The only location that would accommodate the program was the Center Street parking lot. So, the drawings that Schwartz Silver blocked out for us included a one-story library with two parking decks on top, which would augment the existing parking at that location. The option next to that one was to tear down the entire current structure at Pleasant Street and rebuild that from scratch. So, the trustees recently voted a preference towards the Center Street parking lot, with the full understanding that the town owns that lot, and that there was still a lot of discussion to be had. We needed to, for the grant process, consider two locations. One of those locations is allowed to be your current location, but the other one, obviously, has to be somewhere else. And what happened as the feasibility study progressed is, the Center Street parking lot location actually met the program in the most modern and forward-thinking and flexible way, as far as what the vision for the future of libraries is. But it is by no means a done deal. We are still looking for feedback. There have been some suggestions from some of the committees, as I've met through the budget cycle, about exploring options for public-private partnerships. There's been some talk with the local businesses, as well as neighborhood associations. So, it's still moving forward. The trustees have resolved to let the sort of process guide the project, instead of trying to chase this current grant cycle from the commissioners, because the timing is just too tight to get the proper support from the community for whatever we wind up hoping to pursue.
So, if we forego this grant cycle, how often do they open up the grants?
They are bond-funded, and they are, they're pretty much guaranteed money. But, we did meet with the representative from the construction program from the commissioners last week. They are anticipating 30 applicants for this grant round. They basically don't reject anyone. So, if we forego this grant round, there will be 30 projects that will need to be funded and built before they'll open another grant round. That being said, there's usually a handful of folks who wind up dropping out for unforeseen reasons. They can't secure funding, or they lose the property that they were hoping to build on, things like that. But I anticipate it being a good, a little while, unfortunately. The closest I've ever seen the grants post together, in my personal recollection, is three years, but sometimes it can be as many as seven.
Yeah. I think, on the town side, finding the funding would be very challenging.
I agree. I've worked, I've been working closely, obviously, of course, with the trustees, but also with Cara Bruton, the Economic Development Director, and Melissa, of course. We've sat and stared at spreadsheets for a really long time, and tried to find homes for it. It's going to take a lot of talking and a lot of working together, and probably a good amount of time.
Well, I know I'll be happy to work with you as much as I can.
Yes, thank you.
Acknowledging the fiscal restraints that we're working under, and the
Of course.
And, of course, the pressure that the school enrollment crisis is putting on us.
Yeah, we're very respectful of the fact there's a lot going on in that neighborhood as well, and also of the fact that it's very important to that community that the services don't relocate drastically. There's an overwhelming opinion that that area is really important. We don't want to see it out on the edges there. So, we're being very careful, to be respectful of all of those things.
Selectman Heller?
I'll also add that I think that the North Brookline Neighborhood Association has communicated to you and to the trustees that they are opposed to your moving the building into the Center Street parking lot for many reasons. I don't think they cited a reason that concerns me about that proposal, which is that I believe that concentrating services in, right in Coolidge Corner there, is detrimental to some of the other businesses, which are on, more on the periphery of Coolidge Corner. I think the library, and, you know, hopefully, there'll be a revitalization of the places on Pleasant Street as well. You know, I would like to see the library remain where it is for that reason, as well as others, at least right now, from what I can see. That makes more sense to me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is warrant- Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is warrant articles.
Good evening. These are the first few warrant articles under review as part of the upcoming town meeting. So the first article is the traditional article that we have for the May town meeting, which is the measure of wood and bark. We had Bill McGrode and Elmon Hendrickson, who is our new sealer of weights and measures. And those will be the measures of wood and bark. I don't have any puns for you this evening. The third article is compensating balances. And so annually, the state law requires that we annually ask town meeting to authorize the treasurer-collector to enter into these arrangements. The fifth article is for unpaid bills from prior fiscal years. I'm happy to report that we don't have any. And Gary is here to talk about Article Six, and then I can double back on Article Seven.
Before you leave, any questions on those articles?
Wooden bark?
Wooden bark. I always wanted to be the measure of-
I wouldn't dare ask a question of that.
When I first joined the advisory committee, wooden bark was actually the first article I had to speak.
Yeah, me too. That's fun, wasn't it?
It's a rookie thing.
You branched out from there, right?
Right.
You branched out.
And all of these articles are articles we see every year, except perhaps the last one, but-
But we'll have, Gary has the property tax exemption. He can just give you an update on what the FY17 impact is.
Mr. McCabe?
Thank you, Chairman Woschinski. Gary McCabe, chairman of the Board of Assessors. I thank you for the opportunity to present what's now known as warrant Article Six to you for your support. Brought to you by the Board of Assessors. This is an annual article that come before the spring annual town meeting. It's come before town meeting regularly since fiscal year 1989. And what it provides for is an increase in statutory exemption for eligible taxpayers, real estate taxpayers in Brookline, for up to 100% increase over the standard amount of the exemption. An example is presented, or all the exemptions are presented in the chart in the warrant article write-up. But an example would be a exemption that might be $500. By statute, we would increase it to up to $1,000 for eligible taxpayers. The increase has to be adopted annually at town meeting. Board of Assessors can't simply do it, nor the Board of Selectmen. So we do have to go to town meeting each year to do that. The amount of the increase comes out of the overlay reserve account. There's an amount within that account that's been set aside in preparation of this article. I estimate that for fiscal year 17, upcoming fiscal year, that this additional cost will be approximately $62,000. That's a slight increase over the current fiscal year. I think the good news is there is because we have some additional taxpayers who have come forward as eligible for exemptions. So we have an increase in the number of people receiving exemptions. Again, those are summarized in the chart here. The total of those numbers in the most recent complete fiscal year 15 was 126 taxpayers. What doesn't show on this chart are those additional exemptions that aren't impacted here. And I do want to note those, however. The tax deferrals, we have 11 homeowners that have received tax deferrals. And then the very successful senior work-off program, there's 30 taxpayers in that program. I was so glad to hear the good work of the Council on Aging and the Senior Center tonight as part of their budget presentation. Ruthann did not mention the terrific work that they do to support this senior work-off tax abatement program. That program has run out of the Council on Aging. And we're very appreciative of their support for that. So I'm here to ask for your support and try to answer any questions.
Sounds good to me.
Good.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is something we see every year. So the members of this board are very familiar with this program. And I agree that we should continue it. And the qualifications are quite, one of the reasons we have so few taxpayers is the, many of these are income limited and the limits are kind of low.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Woschinski. You know, it seems like 126 taxpayers, it really aren't that many when we have, you know, 17,000 properties. This has been a challenge, particularly for us here in Brookline, because these, many of these exemptions are what we've referred to as means-tested. Either there's an income requirement or an asset requirement or both. And taxpayers, for the most part, are not eligible because they have, you know, a regular income and they have other assets besides their home. They may still have a need for some help paying their taxes. And so that's when it becomes really challenging. So we have worked with this board and town meeting to change those limits when we can. Income, raising the income limits or the asset limits so that more taxpayers become eligible. We have other challenges beyond that. And that's raising awareness of these programs. It's one of the reasons I think this is a nice opportunity each year to come before you in a public session and talk about property tax exemptions for those that are eligible and that need these, need assistance. Because there may be taxpayers who are still not aware of these programs, even with the outreach efforts that we've had in the past and continue to have. Or, in addition, they don't want to come forward and ask for help.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you've had any outreach efforts with partnering with the Council on Aging and with the Senior Center. It seems to me that you could almost never have too much outreach in a situation like this. And to inform people about the program and find out if they're eligible. And I'm wondering whether that's happened.
It has. Thank you, Selectman Heller, for that question. We have an outreach, a regular outreach program through the Council on Aging that has several components. One is an initial meeting. I know Selectman Daley has participated in a number of years as your representative to the Council on Aging. So we talked to the group at the Council on Aging about these exemptions. We also are very fortunate to have one of our senior work-off volunteers who's been trained by the assessors have regular hours, office hours, we'll call them, at the Senior Center to assist seniors in particular, understand the requirements for these exemptions. Her name is Sandy Spector. She's been terrific. And that, those office hours outreach program is in the tab every week that says, you know, there will be office hours this week or next week at the Council on Aging Senior Center to help you if you have questions about these exemptions. We, you know, we've used both our website and the Council on Aging website to reach out. There's been some suggestions about more direct mailing to the general population of, you know, property owners in Brookline. We'll continue to work on that. And any assistance is appreciated.
Is there a way you could use the census, the town census, to identify people who might fit into this category?
Yes. We have done that analysis by comparing the census data to the assessors database, try to match up where age-eligible people live and then see if they're the homeowner. To qualify for this exemption, you have to be the taxpayer, not just a resident or a tenant. So, you know, we have done some of that, yes.
One of the things that we should give some airtime to and that Estelle Cates was so vocal about before she passed away was providing some benefit to renters as well. And that's a separate program apart from this warrant article, but the town has made some efforts to provide funding for renters of units who may have difficulty paying their rent.
Yes.
Which in sort of a backhanded way is connected to the tax payments.
Right, yeah, thank you. Selectman Franco, I see Frank Carroll was here in the audience tonight, and he's been instrumental in establishing that Estelle Cates program through a grant from the town for, senior work-off program for tenants. Yes. And I believe that's successful, been successful. So, thank you.
Anything else on warrant Article Six? What I'd like to do is just, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on Articles 1, 3, 5, and 6? I see none. So we'll move on to Article Seven. Thank you, Mr. McCabe.
Thank you.
Article Seven is a budget amendment. We will be having one, the details of which we won't have for you until closer to town meeting. So the golf course, as you know, is in the process of constructing a driving range. And earlier tonight, you voted as part of your bond sale, $500,000 worth of bond authorization notice, which is short-term borrowing. That is specifically related to the golf course because we think that there will be some available fund balance plus a potential donation that will offset the need to borrow some of that money for the course long-term. So we'll have a better understanding of what the numbers will be closer to town meeting.
Okay, so we don't have language on-
I won't have a vote for you ready for that until later.
Okay.
These others, you know, you could vote them if you'd like to tonight, or we can wait and put them on for next week.
We don't really have that language, so we should wait.
Well, we can vote the other, we can-
We don't have the language. I would prefer to wait.
Okay.
Let's just do them in a, this fashion, next week.
Okay, that's fine. I'm cool with that.
We usually split up the hearing on the calendar. We've been chastised for not doing that in the past.
Okay, I will be chastised. Thank you, Ms. Gough.
Thank you.
And the last item on the agenda is our Complete Streets policy and the question of reviewing the Complete Streets policy. And I see members of the Complete Streets Committee. I've told Mr. Englander that I'm not going to ask for a vote tonight. Selectman Heller had some questions that she wants to discuss with Town Council on some procedure and process relating to appeals from the Transportation Board. Mr. Englander?
Hello.
And I see other members of the Complete Streets Committee here. And I'll say I was also a member of the committee. And on paper, I was the co-chair, but really, Mr. Englander did all the chairing work. And I was happy to be along for the ride.
Selectman Woschinski is being modest, as usual. Okay, I think I've almost set up here. Okay, wonderful. Always rejoice a little bit when this actually works. So thank you so much for having me here to present to you about the work that the Complete Streets Study Committee has been doing for the past year. And so I'm going to talk briefly. You've had a chance to review the policy in advance of this meeting. So I'm going to go through just a little bit of the background and motivation, talk about the goals of what we're trying to do, and see if you have questions about any of the specifics. But before I do, first I want to really give thanks to Todd Corain and Allison Steinfeld, who are really instrumental in helping us, guiding us through this process. One of them, at least one of them, attended each of our meetings and were very helpful. The committee was really tireless in working through some issues that were sometimes pretty difficult. Drafting language by committee is always a challenge. And so I'd like to thank all 12 of them. Well, I guess it's 11, not including me. And especially Selectman Woschinski for his help. We were able to get feedback and input from 10 different boards and committees, as well as Brookline can, as part of this work. And they were extremely helpful in suggesting ways in which the policy could be improved. And we were able to address most of the suggestions we got in the draft that you see before you, or in the final proposal you see before you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the background and motivation, objectives when it comes to scope. I'm not going to go through a lot of detail, as I said. And if you're interested in knowing about some of the details of the funding that we would be eligible for by submitting this policy to the state, I can tell you a bit about that. So, so let me start by saying that, you know, whether we're traveling by foot or bike, motor vehicle, and whether it's by private, for private, public, or commercial purposes, that we all share our public streets and sidewalks. And for this reason, streets are typically the largest public asset that's owned by a municipality. And in many ways, we can think about them, especially in an urban setting like this, as public space. And so in that vein, you know, we often talk about streets and roads, thinking about them as transportation. But when I think about it, the least important thing about streets and transportation in general is about travel and moving people and places from one location to another. And the most important thing is that it dominates and shapes land use, friendship and social networks and environment, and the kind of businesses that can thrive. And it can influence health and happiness and the livability and sustainability of our community. And that's why transportation is so powerful. It's because of the impact it has and everything else. But to use streets as a lever for livability and sustainability means that they really have to be multimodal. That is, they have to be for everybody. And so what is a complete street? Well, it's a street that has facilities for all of the uses that it might have. Here are some examples of some that don't. It's a place that's devised and structured and governed to welcome everybody and for every activity that's appropriate. And to be safer for different kinds of users and different activities. And doing this isn't so much about signs or enforcement. I think our experience, certainly on the Transportation Board, has shown us that signs and enforcement only go so far. Instead, complete streets is about building safety into the design, into the built environment. And the reason for that is because we drive at the speed that we feel comfortable driving. Sometimes the open road just beckons. And there are plenty of examples of how that happens in Brookline, as we well know. So a complete street has built into its design reminders about what's appropriate. Now, in recent decades, transportation design and planning has been focused on- Now, in recent decades, transportation design and planning has been focused on cars and on traffic. And if you plan for cars and traffic, and that means lane width and number of lanes and amount of parking, et cetera, you get cars and traffic. Now, here's an example of where that might be the case. The thing that comes to mind in Brookline for me is the section of Route 9 between Cypress and Washington Street that is really more of a highway or a traffic sewer in my mind that we affectionately refer to as Boylston Street. It doesn't have to be that way. So, you know, if you design a street without people in mind, you're not gonna have people on it, and it might as well be a cemetery. And, but this is, this is our town. We own it, and we wanna make it useful. So, as the notable planner Fred Kent likes to say, "If you plan for people and places, you'll get people in places." And I think where this, where this has come into play in Brookline, or where it's coming into play most recently, in a discussion of the river road planning effort that's been going on, I think there was a comment to the effect that, "Well, you know, let's focus our efforts and our energies on the parcels of land themselves and on making sure we get the kind of development that we want there, that the parcels are the right size, that, et cetera." And the streets and the streetscape is really kind of beyond the scope of this process. Well, you know, I can tell you that it's, the streetscape is very much, should very much be a part of the process, and unless you design it in a way that is comfortable and safe and inviting to people, you may not be successful in getting the kind of activity that you want on the street, no matter what kinds of businesses you try, you think you'll, you wanna get in there. And I think, again, a prime example of this is Route 9. Complete streets does not mean painting a bike lane on every street, et cetera. The idea is to be context-sensitive. A quiet residential street can be thought of as complete as is, if it's relatively low traffic, moving at relatively low speed. Throughout, well, throughout the country, but especially in urban areas and certainly in Boston, you wouldn't necessarily know it looking around this room, but there is a generational shift in progress. We're seeing lifestyle patterns and the ways people travel, where they wanna live, changing markedly for people who might consider themselves to be millennials. There was a study done last year of almost 700 young professionals, which showed a number of key things that we think about as being very important in rating, choosing where they wanna live. Access to public transit, 96 percent. Being able to walk to amenities, 95 percent. Fifty-nine percent for safe bikeways as being important. We did a survey in Brookline. This was among attendees of the Complete Streets Forum that was put on in June 2014. And as you can see here, a number of the things that we think about when we talk about complete streets were rated as, in the top five improvements, the respondents wanted to see in Brookline. And it's not just those kinds of benefits, but it's well-known through quite a bit of extensive research around the world that doing this can really stimulate local economies because a lot of the savings that comes out of not driving gets put into the local economy. And likewise, you make the local environment more attractive and pleasant. People want to walk around and go to shops, et cetera. Raises property values when you, of abutting land uses, when you make the environment nicer. Brookline's already done a lot in this regard, thanks to the leadership of the Transportation Division and the Transportation Board, et cetera, including partnering with MBA on various projects, traffic calming policy, crosswalk policy, the Green Roots Master Plan that the Bicycle Advisory Committee's put together, and various other efforts. Sometimes, this is what it can feel like, walking around some parts of Brookline, especially with a child. And what we know is that notably, our streets and sidewalks are not yet sufficiently safe for all users. However, Brookline is in fact known for its walkability. We've won a gold ranking in a national, a national study that was done last year among walkable urban places. And one of the reasons many of us live here is because we're drawn to this kind of environment, where it is walkable, it's compact, you can do a lot without getting in your car. Most kids, in fact, get to school by walking. So, where are we? Well, not gonna go through the history in detail, you're familiar with it. But as you can see, we've worked on this pretty deliberately and extensively over the last year to get to where we are. And so the draft that, or the proposal that you've been able to review has been heavily vetted by the list of boards and committees you saw earlier, as well as by public hearing, reviewed by Town Council, and as well as Town Staff. And we've been able to incorporate most of the suggestions for improvements that we've gotten in the version that you've seen. So, again, I think I've already talked about most of the objectives, but the reason for having a policy is so that you have a foundation that can serve as a really basis for transportation and planning and budgetary decisions. Something that can be a touchstone whenever various decisions come up. And I know from working on the Transportation Board that, you know, the efforts I talked about before were kind of done with a patchwork of policies, state and federal and local, and that having something that puts it all together will be of tremendous use. Often, we talk about making streets so that they're safe and comfortable for people of all ages, from eight to 80. In particular, when we designed the policy, we, the idea was to think about the impact on what we call vulnerable users. If we design streets and sidewalks, et cetera, so that vulnerable users are safe and comfortable and can get around easily and conveniently, then we've made things better for everybody, really. And what we mean by this, by vulnerable user is by virtue either of their, the way they get around, or, that is, if they're not surrounded by 3,000 pounds of metal, or because of their age or ability. So, and the idea was to do this in a way that's consistent with the strengths and values that the Brookline community holds dear. And I've listed a few of them here, but certainly beautiful public spaces, street trees, public art, in a way that encourages social engagement and makes the environment pleasant to move about and be in. Environmental sustainability, economic vitality, social equity, et cetera. So, that's really most of what I wanted to say. I won't go through the policy's scope in detail, but I will tell you what it covered. We, in the process of doing this, reviewed the complete streets policies of a number of municipalities around the state and the nation, and they, many of them follow the, more or less, the same format, which are the five components that you see here, projects and phases, design guidance, flexibility, exceptions, implementation, performance measures. Performance measures is key because what you can't measure, you probably won't necessarily achieve. And so, so we hope to, and that's something, the policy is designed such that one of the first activities is to create an implementation plan and decide on the details of how this thing gets implemented, what specific performance measures ought to be used, et cetera. When designing the policy and fine-tuning the language, we went through some pretty considerable efforts to make sure we were striking the right balance between having a policy that was sufficiently flexible so as to be implementable, but also robust enough to really accomplish what we are hoping to accomplish here. So I think that's all I'll say for now, but unless any of my committee members would like to add anything. No? Okay.
Selectman Franco?
So I wanna set the record straight a little bit on this River Road Study Committee conversation that took place. I pushed back in saying that that committee was not in charge of implementing complete streets. I was faced with a conversation where we were talking about implementation of permeable pavement and eliminating lanes of traffic. And while I am not opposed to complete streets, and I don't think the committee is opposed to implementation of complete streets, there's some process that needs to go through, and the River Road Study Committee, which this board convened, is not the appropriate place to talk about repaving of Brookline Avenue and the implementation potentially of a bike lane on Brookline Avenue. So, we just need to do some additional things. I'm all for having a conversation about a menu of options which could be implemented, but this, the further development of this industrial island is gonna be iterative. And in planning for people, cyclists, vehicles, as they traverse the area around the industrial island, needs to be done in a thoughtful way and with all stakeholders at the table.
So, you know, one thing I'll say, you know, the state has kinda put a carrot out. If we adopt the policy, we're eligible for funding. And the state, Mass DOT, has been actively encouraging municipalities to engage in the process that we engaged in, and more and more communities are doing that. Communities right around here who've adopted it, complete street policies are Somerville. Somerville did it through a statute. They actually passed a statute through their board, through their city council. Others have done it as a town meeting resolution. Others have done it as an executive order or a policy by their executive, be it mayor or Board of Selectmen. What's being proposed here is we do it as a, as a policy of Board of Selectmen. We had considered going to town meeting with it, but that would've just dragged the process out longer, and we would've perhaps missed the funding cycle. I don't think there, if we were to delay this a week or two, I don't think we would miss any funding cycles, would we?
Probably not a week or two. The application, I believe, extends into at least April, so the application period, so.
Right, so this isn't, you know, we're not, we're not complete trailblazers. We're following some of our other communities.
Right. And, and just to clarify what we would be applying for, once we submit the policy, at that point, we are eligible to apply for up to $50,000 in technical assistance funding, which would allow us to complete a prioritization plan.
Right. And then there's, there's promises, whether it'll be funded, of additional funding for actual projects.
Right, up to 4,000, $400,000 in the first year per municipality. And they seem to think that they can accommodate, you know, all comers there, but we'll see.
We'll see. So I guess one question I have is, you know, we do this, what changes?
Right. Well, certainly, well, here's, here's one example that I can think of that is perhaps one of the most significant. Right now, every time a street comes up for repaving, you know, Todd Corain and the Transportation Board take a look at it to see if it's something that ought to be, where accommodations for pedestrians and bikes ought to be strengthened, or something else should be done with, you know, signal timing, or whatever. Some additional thought should be put into the design rather than simply redoing what's there. And so, and in fact, you know, it's not just repaving, but sometimes more extensive work. I think there have been a number of examples around town. But, so, so one thing that might change here is that now that, and so, just to put a cap on that, much of what we do is opportunistic, which makes sense in many ways, because the next time, if you're gonna be repaving a street, the next time that might come around to give you the same opportunities to make changes might not be for quite some time. And so, you know, I think that there has been an effort to try and do projects that really have the most impact, but I think it hasn't really been done, I guess, from a higher level where you could look around town and see, "Well, what are the biggest needs in terms of, say, the number, the total social benefit, the number of people that would be affected, the benefit that would result based on the degree of improvement, et cetera?" And so, as we, after we do the prioritization plan, I think it's quite conceivable that the projects identified as, say, top five priority projects, might be different ones than the ones that you would've done simply pursuing the sort of opportunistic strategy that we've tended to use till now. But, but you asked me what differences. That was just one example. I mean, primarily, I think, really, this allows us to go through, as policy, as bylaws and whatever come up for review and evaluation, we can be reviewing them with regard to how well they, they serve all the users of our, how well those statutes, in fact, serve all the users of our community, and whether there ought to be changes there. Any programs that are done. So it's not just streets and painting lines and doing that. It may in fact, for example, encourage efforts at parking and transportation demand management, even though that's not explicitly spelled out in the policy.
At what point in the process would this policy, should it be adopted, be implemented? Surely, you know, it's gotta be done before it gets to the Transportation Board and, or this board when we're signing contracts. It's gotta be baked into the very beginning of the conception of a street repaving, a street redesign, the installation of a bike lane, the widening of a sidewalk.
Certainly, baking it into the, from the very beginning stages is the most efficient way to do things, rather than have to retrofit things afterward or wait, or, you know, have delays until you do a redesign. So that's, that's the intent. And in fact, it's explicitly stated in the policy that that should be done. In terms of next steps, once this is, becomes effective, the first step is for, of the... In terms of next steps, once this is, becomes effective, the first step is for the Board of Selectmen to designate an entity to develop a, an implementation plan. While we specified some high priority activities as far as implementation, in addition to requiring that a plan be drawn up, there really is quite a bit of detail to be worked out, I think. One of the items is to assess, to do an assessment of whether additional resources are required to be able to implement the policy. And so, that's something that, you know, that I would expect would be one of the first items on the implementation plan.
I have a question. When you, yeah, I'm curious about, I'm not sure I really understand how this is going to work and how it's going to be implemented, how the designs are going to get worked out. But I'm curious about the accommodation of all modes of use. And I'm, sometimes I worry that it's not possible to have an efficient traffic flow and a very, very safe lane, bicycle lane, on the same street. And I'm wondering whether the Transportation Board has given any thought to planning bicycle routes which go on much safer and residential streets that are not highly used as an alternative, maybe parallel to a major road, but much safer? Usually, they're a lot prettier, too, as, you know.
Sure.
And I understand that this is an effort that's being implemented in cities across the country, and I'm wondering whether Brookline is considering this approach.
Sure. I think someone from the Bicycle Advisory Committee could speak much better to that, but I can say that for many years, the committee has been, the Advisory Committee has been designing and refining a master green roots plan that they have that I think one of the objectives is to take advantage of existing low-stress routes that can be put together to form a network. Unfortunately, in Brookline, we don't always have alternatives to, that are parallel to some major, major routes, popular routes of travel. And so, it's not always possible, but I know there is an effort to do that. And I think there's also an effort to fit into larger regional efforts, such as the Emerald Network, that's being put together in the greater Boston area.
So, let me ask you that. Will this policy enhance those efforts or detract from these efforts?
Well, I, I'm not sure it would do either. In, I think your, part of your motivation is to, you know, to try and strike a balance between making things safer and reducing motor vehicle flow. It's not always a zero-sum game. And I think some of the work done recently by the Transportation Division on the Beacon Street Plan, where a, a lane of travel is being basically converted into a buffered bike lane going up the hill toward Washington Square from Coolidge Corner, it was, there were extensive studies done using the simulation tools that they have, which in, the plan in conjunction with signal timing improvements actually resulted in relatively little change in, in time it would take to travel in a car through the area. Sometimes, these things are non-intuitive. Often, there's, I don't know, what some engineers refer to as friction, when you have two lanes of traffic, people jockeying for position and waiting to pass and double parking and that kind of thing. Often, when you convert one to, say, a bike lane, or simply remove it for other purposes, you notice that the friction goes away, and so, you can have actually better flow, better throughput.
So, is that, that project at the roughly intersection of Summit and Beacon and Park, the type of project you would envision being advanced under this complete street project?
Well, that, that project was being advanced completely without the complete streets policy.
Right. But is it in line with what, the type of thing we'd see if complete streets was adopted?
Oh, certainly. And I think that's a good example also of where there wasn't really a good parallel alternative on low-stress streets that made sense.
Not sure I agree with you there.
Any other questions? Okay. As I said, we're not going to vote it tonight, and thank you very much, and thank you to the committee, and we'll put it on the calendar the next week or the week after. And I depot.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the late hour. And I think that concludes our business.